All right, I'm going to call the order of the Hancock County Commissioners' meeting for December 3rd.
I'm going to move to adopt the agendas published with the exception of adding an item before 16G titled Possible Action to Exercise the Option Agreement with Elliot Jordan and Son to dispose before the end of the year on property with a purchase price of one million eight hundred fifty thousand to be paid from ARPA funds.
Second motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'd just like to explain that I think as we move there, a number of ARPA requests in throughout the agenda different and I think probably we're going to discuss when we get to those, you know, whether sort of the status of our funds and whether there's money really there to do with all these projects. So I don't, I didn't know where to stick that item, but I think probably we're gonna it's gonna be the topic of discussion first for our question to get to.
Any public comment today? All right, here none.
Okay, so the minutes, I'd like to move the table this minutes to the December 17th, 2024 meeting.
Second motion? Opposing favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we have a presentation for the five towns committee.
Should I stand up here or?
Yeah, right.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Mary Allen. I'm Chair of the Surrey Select Board, Surrey. And with me today is Gina Bushon, who's on the Select Board for the town of Orland. And it was suggested to us that we greet the Commissioners of Hancock County about this dilemma that we find ourselves in. There are five towns involved and three dams are involved. There's Silver Lake, Alamosick Lake, and Tadi Pond Dam dams that are threatened by the company to walk away, AIM Incorporated, or AIM LLC and Bucksport Mill LLC own the three dams as well as part of the property in Bucksport. And they have petitioned DEP, as you may have read from the material I've printed, to be allowed to release the water from the dams. They no longer have interest of any kind in the dams. And so the only law on the books comes from, I think, 1995, and it says that if this kind of a thing happens, that the DEP has to be petitioned and given DEP must give permission to the dam owners to release the water after they've proven that it would have no environmental impact. But there's no law on the books in the state yet that talks about the environment, the economic impact of releasing water from three dams in this case. And we find ourselves faced with legal, legal responsibilities, legal bills, because we, the five towns have hired legal representation. And we're trying to ask the company, we have asked the company to release information about the condition of the dams, the prior history of maintenance records and so forth, and they have refused to date to give us any information to allow us to make an informed decision about whether it would be even possible to purchase one or more of these dams. And as you probably know, Silver Lake is the, provides the water source for the town of Bucksport. So there, there is severe economic impact to the release of water from the dams. Economic and residential property taxes will plummet of the tax. I guess the tax value of property, the value of property will plummet on these lake shore properties. So the five towns have figured out a way to partition out the money that we pay for our legal representation according to the numbers of properties on, on Tadi Pond. Surrey has 140 residences and Penobscot has slightly more, slightly less and so forth. So we, we wanted to make you aware of this, this real problem that we're having and wondered if you had any guidance to give us about how to proceed. Gina's going to talk for just a second about some recent advances that we've realized through the legislative body, the legislators in the state that represent us. And so we're here to appeal to you to provide us with any guidance or advice of any kind that you could help us formulate, keep moving forward to, to find a resolution that's favorable to our tax, to our residents in these five towns. Any questions before I ask Gina to separate?
I guess I'd have to tell you that having sent you along with the rest of it, you have to tell me.
Okay.
It's way outside of my expertise.
Okay.
We were responsible to this. We, first thing we would do is just to get legal representation.
Sure.
And that's the only thing we could suggest to you is be sure that every move we take is, that's the basis, the orderities, and experts.
Okay.
Because that's all we could do. We think we were in your shoes based on the state.
Okay. We did reach out to, to emergency management. I may not thinking of his name.
Yeah, he said he's.
Thank you. And of course, this would become an emergency that would involve him if the dam waters were released and it and it caused some dam, potential danger to residents. And so there's that angle too, that we wanted to make him aware of what's, what's happening.
I am curious though, you said the, to what, the only criteria is the environmental issues?
That's, yes, as far as.
Is it really articulated from its problems ever?
Yeah, I mean, Department of Environmental Protection will, will rule if, on the petition by this, these companies to release the water by looking at the impact environmentally if the waters are released. And I think that there are multiple environmental impacts that would occur. But that's the only, those are the only criteria by which the state has any interest in dam water release.
Is the environmental impacts articulated or was it listed in the?
Yes, I mean, there's quite a long list of what they're looking at and at first, they filed a petition in July and that was pretty quickly denied because it was so deficient in information that was required. And the second petition, we, shocked, the second petition was accepted by the DEP, which we're still scratching our heads about because they still haven't.
When they accept them, is that they agreed to look at?
Yes, they agree, they, when they say accept the petition the second time around, they now will be studying that and.
Isn't that really what you want though?
What's that?
Isn't that really what you want?
Well, we do, but I think what we're most concerned about is the five towns is the economic impact of property values.
Right now you have, you have one aspect, Mr. Clark, that you want to really look at closely and thoroughly and.
Yes, yes. We're, we're, we're actually basically at the beginning of this process. It's going to be a long slog, slog, if you will.
What's the timeframe in terms of DEP right now?
I think we, we, or Gina can speak to this too, but the town of Bucksport and the town of Orland had, have enacted moratoria to prevent any action at all for 180 days and those can be renewed, as I understand it, for another 180 days. So that we are buying ourselves a little time to, I guess, strategize, if you will. But it was suggested that we inform the Commissioners that this is happening and it's consuming our every waking hour practically lately and and I didn't know if you had any advice other than what you've suggested, Mr. Clark, to make sure we have good counsel.
Well, I don't want to speak for.
Sure.
For the Commissioners, this is the first time we've heard anything about that. We've read your information, but should a gentleman want to offer any advice that I haven't? You know, for me? Well, I would have, I would have just mentioned Andrew again, saying, you.
Yes.
How that's going to play into surely to, because of the effects.
He's been very good to our town in the past and he's shown an interest in keeping abreast of what's, as this, as this situation develops, yeah. And I think, I think we're fortunate that we have gotten the attention of our legislators. And I'm going to turn over for Gina to just give you a brief presentation of what she's recently found that seems hopeful to us. Gina, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Yes, thank you guys for your time. Actually, you may not know, but you guys are mentioned in the statute as well as having a role in reviewing this whole process. So I don't, I don't think you have to do something, but AIM is required to consult with a number of groups and that might be interested in ownership and actually you're listed as one of those that might be interested, but probably aren't. That's the problem. Most people that are listed on that probably aren't. There is a requirement that they meet with inland fish and wildlife, they meet with forestry, and they meet with agriculture, and they meet with MEMA. To, those agencies will determine if there's a public good to those dams and in theory they could take them. I don't think anyone expects the state to do that because there's hundreds of dams out there that this would set a precedent of more dam ownership. So I think the, the idea they're going to do that is pretty limited. We do have really good support in Augusta. Right now, the governor is putting forth her own bill that's going to extend the consultation period, which is something that I think we all feel is a benefit, not only for us to get our viewpoints and, and information together, but it also, the longer this process goes, the more hopefully the, the owner will be willing to work with us to come up with a, a good solution. So that's the first thing she's going to, that's going in probably in the next week or two. It's also, they're giving us the opportunity to incorporate some information requests. As Mary said, we're not getting the information about the conditions of the dam and the inspections and the cost of running it, which no town could go to their citizens and say, oh, let's take three dams, but we don't know what it's going to cost us. So the governor's bill will at least incorporate some of those requirements that they pass that information along. The second, there's four bills that are percolating right now. The second would be to establish some sort of multi municipal entity that could eventually take ownership should we choose that route. And that's a tremendous asset because there's really, we want to have, if we're going to do it, we'd obviously need a source of money. And we, it might be able to be constructed with taxing authority for the actual district and it in theory could also shift the liability away from the specific towns involved. So that's a very appealing thing. They're willing to talk to us about that. They're also working on a revolving fund for towns that have high hazard dams, municipalities, so that money can be available to rehab these because a lot of them are in bad shape. And apparently this is something the legislators, legislature itself can appropriate the money and it doesn't need a bond issue necessarily. So they're working on that. And the last one is to try to improve MEMA. Because they're, they've got, I guess there was a, several big studies and discussions about the, how it's really not serving the citizens very well because they're so understaffed. They can't get the right people. They have no funding. So this would improve their position considerably, probably with a fee tack on anybody that has a high hazard dam to pay into this process, but it would allow them not only to do more inspections and keep things up to date, but it would allow them to provide technical assistance to towns that are struggling with dams that are in very poor condition because that's, there's previously there's been a lot of money out there to actually fix dams and improve them, but the part that's looking at them and figuring out what you need to do to improve them, that's really hard to get money for. So if MEMA could come in and help towns, just figure out what they needed to do, that would be immensely helpful. So anyway, we've got Nina Milliken, Nicole Gukowski, Ron Russell, who's our outgoing representative. They're all on board with helping us get all of this through. We're working with all the legislative directors at state level. They're also going to facilitate a meeting with the three agencies that have to do this public good evaluation so that we can understand what their criteria are going to be and their process for doing it. We were, none of us happy with DEP that just sort of rubber stamped the application that AIM put in. It was totally inadequate and we hadn't, they promised to get a list of information from them and they, they dissolved through on that. So we want to take a better crack at these other three agencies to at least make sure it's a serious review. We're not just, oh, you showed up, you're done. So that's, that's basically what's going on in Augusta. We really thought, because this, this impacts, you know, as Mary said, drinking water in Bucksport. The tax basis, this is Orland, Surrey, Penobscot, and Blue Hill. We all have properties and their taxes would be wiped out. For Orland, which owns the majority, but has property owners, all of Alamosick is, is Orland, half of Tadi is. So it would decimate our town. And, you know, losing the water in addition to all the economic things, there's firefighting issues. We don't have any water for firefighting. There's all sorts of things. And really trying to form a good path forward. So again, sorry, it can be so lengthy, but there is so much going on, as Mary said. We're spending kind of night and day working on this.
Does Hancock County still have water?
They, they've gotten re-engaged with us. They had a people out with health issues, which are now back on staff. So I had a lovely conversation. They're anxious to work with us. So we're really trying to engage all the interested parties to help us through this process.
The Fishery is also obviously seriously involved with it, right?
You mean the hatchery?
The hatchery, I mean, yeah.
They have, we would hope they would, but they're not going to be. They, even though they discharged into Alamosick and their permit, if Alamosick went away, they closed down because they couldn't possibly meet their permit requirements. The Federal Fish and Wildlife Service has a pro dam removal policy. And we have been told at least, they've run it up their chain a few times, they will not say anything publicly about keeping Alamosick Dam because it would go against their national policy. They wouldn't even participate in a resource meeting we had just to talk about environmental impacts. They said, we, we can't do anything publicly. So unfortunately, they're not in a place.
Case of being so heavily minded and then go with.
Yeah, yeah.
Powerful entities.
Oh, we thought they were going to be our saviors. And it's like, what do you mean you aren't going to say anything?
At risk of shutting down your hatchery.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
This is what you.
No, it's, it's, it's really unfortunate.
I'd like to consider that dams to be in a fire mouth impact where this case might actually be the opposite.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you very much for your update.
Oh, we certainly will.
I'd be happy for you to kind of make me a contact person for the Commissioner.
Perfect. I will do that. And it may be a relief for you guys if, depending on how the legislation goes, to get you to weigh in with letters of support or something. Great. Anyway, thank you so very much.
Many, many details we often take the stance of if we have no authority over or no responsibility to, we don't really get involved. But I think we might make exceptions to this.
Thank you.
We really don't have any responsibility or authority, but I really think that this is, comes to me as.
Thank you. Very much appreciated.
Melanie, you there?
Yes, Commissioners, good morning.
Do you have anything to add to your report?
No.
I'm going to move to accept and file the UT monthly report as presented.
Second motion? Opposing favor?
Aye.
All right, tell us about our building.
Yes, I, I sent a letter to the landowners asking for an appointment to meet with them. They called me back and we scheduled an appointment for November 27th. I met with the landowners, Mr. and Mrs. Sherman, on November 27th. And we reviewed the site. I took lots of pictures. At the end of the meeting, they agreed that it was a dangerous building and it was beyond repair. Mr. Sherman thought it could be salvaged, but Mrs. Sherman did not believe it could be salvaged. And she finally got him to agree that the cost to cure it was beyond what they could, could manage. They decided that the route they wanted to take was to tear it down. But because of its proximity to the, well, because of the, it's a small lot, a non-conforming lot. And the buildings are very close to the water. So before they tear the buildings down, they wanted to get a building permit from Land Use Planning Commission to replace new, new buildings back. So that's where we are. I gave them the contact information for the lady at the Bangor District Office of LUPC to contact. And they were going to contact LUPC to get a, try and get a building permit to replace these buildings before they tear them down.
So in other words, they're afraid of, of altering or affecting any rights that they have grandfathering.
Yes, they're, they're afraid of losing their grandfathering if they just tear the buildings down. So they want to get a permit to replace them before they start demolition.
So, so that's fair. How, I saw the note, you know, about, from the attorney about, you know, taking action. I'm not sure what action we can take other than, I mean, do you have any suggestions?
Hey, at this point, I think we should try to work with them, but I think we need to stay on top of it to make sure that they're following through.
There's progress being made.
Yeah, there, yeah, there's progress being made, yes.
So I'm, I'm of the school of thought that we are to let Miller continue to stay on top of this and that really we don't have any action to take at this point.
And I called him, tried to call him yesterday, but I couldn't get, didn't get through. But I'm sure that with Thanksgiving weekend, they didn't get a chance to get in touch with anybody at LUPC until either yesterday or today.
And has there been any contact with the complaint?
I talked to the complainant, I didn't talk to, I sent an email back and forth on Tuesday, the, the day before I had the site inspection. And I have not responded to the complaint since the site inspection, but I will do that today.
But you're not requesting any action of us today?
My, my, I guess my request would be, let's give the applicant time to see if they can get a permit to replace the structures to before they do the demo. Because they're, they're willing to do the demo if they can get a permit to replace them.
With your knowledge of inner workings of the LUPC, what kind of timeframe do you think it's going to take for them to get the decision from them?
Probably a prime of my rule of some sort.
Yes, I would think it would be fairly, fairly quick. We've got a meeting next Wednesday. I can talk to people at the LUPC then and see if they've been contacted at least.
Sounds good. All right, do you have anything? All right, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
I'll keep you posted.
Have you haven't heard anything from basically people on the East End?
No, I've not heard anything from the Nature Conservancy. I did get a signed document back from the Eagle Island Association, but they didn't sign the same document that the Commissioners had signed. They signed a blank document. So I'm not sure. I sent them a copy of the document that the Commissioners had signed, the MOU, and thought they would sign that one, but they, they took one of the early documents and signed that. I would have liked to have had them all on the same, signatures all on the same document.
Yeah, just so we're absolutely positive that documents match.
Yeah. Follow up with them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Uh, reports, monthly report.
Morning. Nothing, nothing to, nothing to change.
Move to accept and file the monthly reports presented. Second motion? Opposing favor?
Aye.
And the other item is the, the agreement with Cape Air. It was, mirrors the previous agreement, other than the rates have changed.
That's what I, that was my question. So I'm going to move to approve and sign the lease and operating rights agreement between Hancock County and Hyannis Air Service Incorporated that's presented.
Second motion? Opposing favor?
Aye.
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 That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, EM report? Sure, you can answer one there now.
I'm going to move, I'm going to move to accept and file the EM monthly report as presented.
Second motion? Opposing favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, so this next item is ARPA funding. And then we started getting this ARPA funding as we moved down, so. One of my worries is that there's a lot of requests here and probably will be at the next meeting also. I have a worry that the requests outweigh available funding. And I'm not sure if that fear is founded. So I don't know, Monica, if you could help us with that or if we need to do sort of an accounting before we move on or?
Well, I'd like to take Monica's report and just go down through it line by line, especially as we look at the unexpendable balance. Because we basically set up a budget issues and a number of those haven't, we have to met that budget or exceeded, so.
So I agree. I, I think that a place to start maybe is Monica's line at the bottom is, is ARPA funds not yet designated. That's one million two hundred eighty-five, two forty-seven, thirty-five.
I would say so. Figure out how she arrives at that figure.
What, well, let me finish. So I was going to take that number and let's do, just as Bill suggested, go through and then add to that number. In other words, if we have, you know, if we find something's not expensive, then we can add it to that number. Is that consistent? I, I think we have.
I understand and I, and I agree with that. I just I suppose it will be advised as we go through how that one point two eighty-five was for.
Yeah, and what it includes, because there are some items to be honest, that I think maybe, you know, in these requests, it might be included in here or in some shape or form.
So I mean, I've, I've tried to keep a pretty tight tally of the projects as they get approved. And as you can see, the total at the, at the bottom on the second page, the, the current total of all projects is nine, nine million, three ninety-five, three thirty-two, sixty-five. And that's what I use as a constant reminder and, and update to constantly update the, the available funds. Pretty much, almost, there are very few projects here. I try to ask Dennis as we go. I try to ask the different departments as we go, the guys with their vehicles, and the Sheriff's Department, is this still an open project? You know, why haven't we? And, and as far as I know, one place that we could probably take a little bit of money back is the broadband consulting where it shows fifty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars still unexpended.
Well, just, just that, follow up. What about Kelly Barbie? I mean, uh.
Kitty Barbie.
Kitty Barbie. We're not, we're not going to need her anymore, are we? Where's the Kitty Barbie?
That is ARPA consultant Barbie. It's on the top.
Oh, it's the second down. Okay, yeah.
Well, I mean, right now you can say we're not going to need her again, but.
Let's just take that off the timetable. So I'm going to add another fifty-two oh five to our total.
How much are you going to add? How much are you going to add?
Five thousand. He's looking in the unex, he's looking in the unexpended.
That's what's left from what we had set aside for her.
Right.
Five thousand, two hundred and five dollars, yeah. Unexpended, I can't see.
It's the third unexpended.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess my question there is there are invoices that are likely to come in that
not that I'm aware of. I think she had contacted us with the last set of invoices and you, you said you would get that taken care of.
Oh, yeah, there are no outstanding invoices, but it's a matter of whether down the line we decide we need her services and maybe that would fall in that um, that suggested ARPA, you know.
And I don't think, I don't think anything will go to do right now is going to prevent us from dipping back into these funds to pay her if we needed her. So I'm just saying that the likelihood is that we don't, let's add it and we may have to use it. The same thing with the fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred, adding that back in. Now, this is one that the, brought there forward, Michael.
Yeah, so let me speak to that. I did follow up with him and told him we needed to know before today's meeting, obviously. He, uh, corresponds back and forth with the broadband representative through town of Orleans as well. And basically, original motion was moved to approve contributing two hundred thousand dollars from the county's ARPA funds towards town Orleans fiber network project. Provided they receive the necessary funding from their town, consolidating communications from the M C A grant. So the town did set aside fifty thousand dollars at their last town meeting. The M C A did award a grant to basically consolidating communications, uh, to fund that work, completed as part of it. And then obviously, uh, you know, that's those three-pronged tests that you would set. So I mean, at, at this point, they've provided documentation that appears that they have achieved the grant, which is going to pay C C I. They raised their fifty thousand and then they would just need the remaining from the county.
So they've done everything that we requested.
That appears to be the case, yeah.
What's, what's the delay in paying?
Well, a part of it was, is that, uh, the representative for Mission Broadband was still waiting to hear back from, um, M C A, I believe, on confirmation. I had some funding and, and C C I as well, and, and he just, he missed that. They, they didn't follow up with him when he had requested. So he, he didn't notify us and that's why we finally said, either this is happening or it's not, you need to tell us, so.
Yeah, so, so the funds are committed. We haven't written the check because we're, not everything's started. It's where it has to, it is. It is where it is.
Well, Michael, are you very comfortable this is going to happen?
I mean, as well as anybody else can be, that, I mean, they have the money. C C I has an agreement with M C A. And obviously, I think the last component to that is the town.
You have to think.
So they're intending on starting here within the next year, from what I understand, but.
My point is, I don't think that we can count on that money. We've already committed it.
Well, this, this money, you're going to have to turn back because if for some reason that project goes south, we can't designate that money for anything else. I just, I don't know, it just makes me very hesitant. It's sat there now for over a year.
I just think the only thing to realize too though, is it's a project that has a lot of different facets to it, terms of different grants different sources of money, and then the work actually has to get done. Think about all the different broadband projects that are probably out there that are partially happening in the state. It's, it's just a project that just takes a long time.
I know, for all the projects that have come for us, got approved, they've done, they've been paid for. Just seems like, why is this one languishing? So it just well, I hope we don't set you wishing something to be in. Well, I don't see any interest in taking that back, so let's move on. Um, I'm still, we talked about this earlier, but the forty thousand for administrative. And this is another area that I'm curious about. Whether or not, A, we can just set aside forty thousand, having no idea what we want to do with it. And B, if we don't do anything with it, obviously you can't do anything anything other than administrative costs, so. This is a case of where we have the ability to take forty thousand dollars and put it towards a project today. And if we get ten thousand dollars worth of, uh, expenses that we would have taken from this, but we don't have the money now, still had thirty thousand dollars. So notice we, we take the ten thousand we need from another source, pay for the administrative part of it, and take the forty thousand and put it towards a project that we know we're going to project that we know we're going to spend that money on, and we don't risk losing it.
Your opinion, Michael?
So I don't know if you want to speak to it or not, but as part of this process, we were advised that we had to perform calculations to come up with this targeted figure value. Because there will be administrative expenses, but again, if we didn't designate ob slash obligate those funds and report that to, to the feds, then those funds would not be available to us. Some of the costs in that forty thousand and Monica can expand on that because she's been doing the regular quarterly reporting on this. It involves the annual audits that were required to perform, which are at least five thousand um, a- as well. So I mean, there's some costs that we have fixed that you've not budgeted in your budget right now. So it can't come from your budget. So where are you going to get that money? And, and there's other reporting and things that we need to do, but I don't know if Monica wants to speak to that.
How many years do you think, how many years out do you imagine that will get, uh, the audits will happen? Will it just be this year, next year, or will it be like three or four years of audits?
Yeah, we're not doing separate audits of this, and isn't part of our audit process.
No, they're, they're saying a lot, saying they're federal anytime you have.
Thousand just to do this, wishing.
I'd be surprised if you can do it for that.
Which is, we're not talking, we're not talking about, I mean, we're talking about a lot of money, we're talking about a lot of entries and stuff. Compared to our, you know, county budget.
What we just paid them for the, the prior audit was, as I understood, close to that amount.
Yeah, but you're talking about a county budget, right?
No, I'm talking about the county, just this.
This has been, this has been audited already.
For one year and they're in the process of auditing or finishing the audit on, uh, the two thousand twenty-two year, twenty-three, one, one, they're, so they're.
They're working on twenty-three.
Yeah, twenty-three. So, so they've done twenty-two already and would have done twenty-three. They worked on it now.
So we still have twenty-four.
If we went twenty thousand, that's four years worth of audits, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, that's something.
Here's my feeling. I'm not for touching that. It's a number that was derived from a suggestion from the source of, uh, of this money. There are going to be audits, there are going to be questions on, you know, coming up what municipalities and, and counties did with this money. There's going to be a lot of questions asked both from governmental entities as well as nonprofit private entities. So that's going to cost the county something. The question is, how much? And the only guideline we have is what is being provided to us by the federal government.
Wait a minute.
And I think we need to adhere.
Federal government says you can take up to forty thousand of your, of your ARPA funds to put towards administrative costs.
No, that's not what they said. They said.
Isn't that what they said? They didn't say you must take forty thousand and.
They're suggesting.
They said, well, they suggested you can take up to forty thousand.
No, they didn't say up to. There was a formula.
So basically, they give a criteria of what qualifies as administrative expenses. And then we had to perform, basically go through and make our best guess estimate as to what all those are going to be based on today's world or as of June, because again, we had to report that by June to submit that.
Can those administrative fees, uh, including legal fees that you might need for
Sure.
the audit, you know, the outside of the audit.
Yeah.
For it to defend.
Yeah.
Something, yeah. I mean.
If all you're cutting out is ten or, ten or twenty thousand, I, I think that ten or twenty thousand is a good buffer to, to keep in there, so.
So you, I, well, that, that changes my point of view a little bit. If you're, if you're sta, you and Michael are stating, well, you think that forty is a little heavy and that we could twenty would work.
She was critical of taking ten.
I, I was saying him.
Okay.
No, no, I think the forty is a reasonable number.
Okay, that's what I want.
Yeah.
Taylor, we were going, we're going to be needing money on the table. Don't understand why we're delivering.
That's why I want to have this discussion. Well.
I mean, if all the decisions have been made sooner, then we could be tightening this up.
Yeah.
Well, she said, I've been predicting for six months that we're going to be here, certainly at the last meeting of the year, but money we don't want to be. And here we are.
So with, let's go back to the broadband for a minute. When Lemoine can ask you this question as well, he went through their process and some of the other communities. Once they met the criteria, I understood we released the managing funds to them because that was the threshold. So those funds could go to them and then, yeah, they may not do the work, but they've been given the funds. If you want to reverse your vote, you just got to go back and explain to Mission Broadband, N C A, and C C I, the reason for doing that. Otherwise, y- y- you sealed your fate on that one.
I agree.
When it was approved. So that had nothing to do with us.
I agree.
I understand the late hour of them not getting back to us, but it was literally a matter of us saying to them, you show us you've got this, or I'm going back to commissioners to tell them you haven't met the criteria that they established, and they may pull the money.
Please don't take any of my comments to be critical of the actions.
I'm not either. I'm just trying to say.
Working on them since May of twenty-three.
The reason that we are where we are is because of what had already been done.
Yeah, my feeling is you're doing the responsible thing.
And if, well, I could come back to you and say, yeah, I got my crystal ball and don't worry about it. They're never going to be able to do it. That, that'd be great, but I mean.
All indications are.
Technically, you didn't leave that on the table because you, you committed it to an organization based on factors that they are showing right now that they've met, so I.
With, in my opinion, we have, we have made a commitment that we need to adhere to that.
And also, according to the auditors, we are responsible for subrecipient re- reporting.
Yes.
And auditing. So we need to make sure that these towns have followed through and finished the projects that they're working on.
Absolutely.
It's just more administrative costs. That forty thousand dollars could go towards hiring attempt to make sure that hiring a kitty Barbie, Barbie, if we need, if we need someone like that to, to make sure that all the the auditing and subrecipient reporting is being done.
So that, that, when we get to the next box here of, um, well, let, let's go to the unexpended, we're, we're sort of going through the unexpected, unexpected balances. When we go down, the next one that we come to is Architectural Services, Louis, Louis Amok. That's because.
That's a real contract.
That's a real contract.
We're getting a bill, yes.
The next one is, is thirty-one, three twelve, same deal.
Yeah, we would need to hear from Julie Curtis on that to see whether she's going to be bringing me another, another indexing bill. I, I would need to check with her, but I have.
But we have made, that was a real project that we committed money to.
Yes.
The next thing.
Excuse me, uh, why are you hesitant about whether we get another bill? I mean, is this a total project that we just have to pay for?
That's right.
Yeah. That's a project that we approve with a finite dollar.
And I, I think she'll come through before the end of the year, one another.
And then, once again, here we are approving that last March, it's nine months ago. And what's the delay?
It just needed to be committed. It doesn't need to be spent.
Well, I know, my point is, is that is that project really going to go ahead as she has said? I mean, it's, she's already nine months hasn't finished the project.
I need to check, I would need to check with Julie.
But I did, there's no deadline for that because the money is committed.
Right.
I know it, but if we don't find out, she said, no, no, this didn't work. Others had thought, can't finish the project. And we don't find that out till the, till the first, uh, January first, it's too late to recommit that money for something else.
All right, so why don't we just make sure that we
Yeah.
hear back.
Yeah.
At the next meeting, share on that.
She is in the office today. I don't know if somebody wants to run and talk to her as, as to this, so you have your answer today or not, but, or call up to her and see if she can come down and talk with you about it, but.
Hi, this is Chuck. Uh, I think you're talking about the indexing, and if you are talking about that project that is ongoing and it's in the middle of, uh, getting, getting done right now.
I, I think she'll bring us about it.
Yeah. Okay, next one is the I am responding, that eighty-four, nine thirty-eight. That is I. All right.
Yeah, we just approved.
You approved that.
Yeah, that was last.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Check it.
Yeah. And then the E O C property, that's not highlighted, but that is committed.
Yeah.
That's, okay.
Everything in that unexpended column is committed.
Yeah. And then the cruisers and the, the vehicles, that's committed. Uh, the jail. So I'm not seeing any other as I went through it at home on my computer, I did not see any others that we could add.
Well, what about, what about the, uh, S O entrance? That was a design build. That's not the term we use, but Dennis, that shows a balance of, uh, we spend a balance of ninety-six thousand, is that, we're going to, with a, with a budget of two hundred seventy-five thousand, we're going to spend the full two seventy-five against the entrance. Okay, do we have more bills coming in on that?
Uh, you know, I really, I don't think we have too much more coming in on that. I'll need to check it out and will.
So what you're talking about, Bill?
Just the S O entrance project. Have we received the final bill on that?
Ninety-six thousand five.
Oh, sure, you'll find out.
I can't imagine you overestimated it by.
Hundred thousand.
Well, maybe we did. Yeah, because that's, what's the term we use? It's not, it's not design bill, it's.
Contract or risk?
Contract or risk. So in other words, they're going to do it not to exceed. Of course, they're going to be sure to get in less money and then to get it done.
And perhaps I had a contingency there.
So that's the, well, that ninety-six is under the S O
Yeah.
entrance tower renovation.
Well, the same difference. We're talking about the same project.
Well, we fully expended the, the funds on the entrance and you call it a separate project, but it, it was a separate approval for the, the two seventy-five. So we do need to check with Charlie.
We'll do for sure.
And see if there's going to be another.
The en- entrance, we would say is expended.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's showing zero for that, but it's the, she's, she separated out the tower entrance renovations because we approved that separately. And that's what we need to find out if there's more bills coming in on that.
We'll do.
And we haven't paid the fixtures yet? Jail plumbing?
No, because that was just approved in October.
Yeah, that's not, that's not even underway.
What about the jail?
It is underway.
What about the jail plumbing project?
The jail plumbing project. Uh, we signed a contract for design, but we don't even have a figure yet on the, on the, the pipe side of that. The fixture side.
We've already spent sixty-three thousand on, we, we, on the jail plumbing project. What was that for?
That was for the fixtures and, uh,
We bought the fixtures.
And we paid Nichols Plumbing to install it by.
And we paid Nichols Plumbing to install a bunch of it.
See, I I won't say that, these are, these are contracted amounts. I I I would really hesitate to just let these funds go until someone says this project is signed off on and there will be no more billing.
I don't think we're saying we wouldn't pay the bill. It's just that they'd be sent back.
I'm suggesting that we'll lose. I'm suggesting that we check in to see if we still owe them. That's all.
For sure, and like, if we had a contingency that we could use there, we should for sure put it back.
So the phase one, and I'm not sure what that covers.
That's the fixtures upstairs.
And you said the fixtures have been bought and installed.
For the most part, not complete, and that's that that additional forty-two thousand that was just signed is what that's all about. For.
That's a separate.
Yes, for the plumbing, uh, piping underneath, uh, like out in the parking garage, they are saying they can't even get a clear scope on that until we demo that ceiling, like, which we said, well, we're not gonna demo the ceiling, we've got so many other things going on.
Dennis, come back and look at whatever you wanted us to pay for a phase one.
Yeah.
Which is fixtures, installation, what else is there? Is there anything else that needs to be paid for under that phase one?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, real quick, Julie Curtis emailed me and said, the money is committed and the next bill is February. That indexing.
So out of curiosity and same note, so we've got the jail architect. Funded.
We have.
Is that?
You're looking at the balance of eighteen.
Yeah.
So we had the jail architect plumbing.
That's for the design and planning, which includes.
Phase two?
Yes, includes one and two.
And two, so you anticipate you're gonna spend more on it because of phase two? Or has that been done?
That, I didn't have the figure, so it's not, that part's not approved. We looked at the overall and estimated a bunch of two hundred fifty thousand and realized that, well, we can't let this whole project sink, so split into phase one, which is the fixtures, and hire, order the parts, hired the vendor to start doing that work, which is ongoing. And then the other part, which is replacing the pipes out in the ceiling, we don't have that figure, so uh, we haven't approved any number there.
A year ago, we approved a thirty-five thousand dollars for architect.
Right, and they have not, they've so far come up with uh, some design plans, but no cost information.
So we have.
No.
We still, we paid a bunch of that, but we have. I'm still, I'm still confused about the answer. Do we, you think we owe the architect more money for work to be done on the disallowing plumbing?
No.
No.
At this point, I'd say no.
So you're not.
I mean, it, my feeling is, in three weeks, I'm gonna tell them this project's dead until we revive it as a capital project because Argo monies are not available to suspend us, and we don't have time, if we don't get the number, we can't approve it. So it kind of withers on the vine, if you will.
We have a design project that we haven't funded yet.
Yeah, well, there does, part of the design is the fixtures and the logistics of of renovating the bathrooms in the jail. The other part, the drain design, that part of it is uh underway and some of it has been done, but we have no, they've not given us that price.
So we we haven't set any money aside for that.
Not for the construction, only for the design.
Gentlemen, that's a, that's a real issue because even if we even if we pay the architect to do the the work, we have no money to do the the project after he designs it.
Well, we could do, we could approve reserve funds for it, but at at this point, I'm aware at a spot where there's so much happening that I wouldn't want them to start tearing the ceiling apart and doing this for a period of. My suggestion at this point is cleave out the phase two part of it. See if there are any design residuals and the monies that are committed for the plumbing fixture, as Monica said, it's a signed deal, and that's.
But actually, on a contract for.
Yeah, haven't we signed a contract for this? I remember signing.
Not for the, for the, we signed a contract for the design and and the and the research into doing, replacing all of the pipes.
So isn't that the jail architect's plumbing?
Yes.
Yes.
Contract.
With eighteen, with eighteen thousand remaining?
Yes, and that's wise because if they don't have a number for me, I'm not gonna pay them to do that part of the work.
Yeah, nothing says we can't go to them now and say regardless of the contract, you don't want to do any more work and.
Well, it's nearly, the onus is on them to give us the price that we can approve, which they have not done.
The price for the work?
Price for the work, yeah.
And.
The eighteen thousand is for the design work.
Right.
Of which we are under contract.
Yes.
To do.
Yes. And we could seek a release from that, which I
We should.
partial release.
Because we don't have any money to do the work after they give us the design. Unless we want to take it out.
No Argo funds.
We won't have. Whatever the Argo.
So let me contact uh, EL Shag today and find out where they are. And if we've got wherever phase two is, we can suspend that and send us a final bill. And then we'll know.
So realize just that well, I just want to make sure when you look at this that you realize it's the jail architect plumbing line that we're talking about.
Yes. Not, not the the jail plumbing fixtures, which we have approved for one oh five or something. That's ongoing. And that's.
What, the number we're talking is eighteen thousand.
Yes.
Six hundred and forty dollars. Of a twenty-five thousand, nine hundred fifty-five thousand.
Yes. My, my suspicion is, I contact them and they're gonna tell me, well, I have maybe a bill from uh, the engineer that is coming in for maybe fifteen hundred dollars or whatever. It's not gonna be anything much more substantial because they haven't done anything much more substantial. And I think they they would agree with that.
Okay.
And I can have that for everybody.
So we go to the next page. With the, we approved thirteen of those, but you know, you've always spent they spent nine thousand of that.
Well, yeah, I would have to check with Tim again, but as as I understand it, whenever I get a bill, I always ask, is this gonna be the final bill? And they always say, no, there's, there's more coming. So I'd have to check with Tim on that one. And see.
Again, we approved that thirteen.
Yes.
Six times.
Chuck, you're on there?
Yes, I'm here.
The IT equipment from Sierra, go connect.
Chuck, the most recent approval was, uh, July of twenty twenty-four, and there's a, there's outstanding sixteen thousand one ninety-five that we haven't been billed for.
We've ordered so much with that, I would have to get into the details and find out what is outstanding on it, but I haven't, you know, everything we've ordered, uh, you know, there's nothing there that would be any remaining dollars on, could they have been actual quotes and exact dollar amounts?
Okay.
I almost think it was a half. And then there's another half remaining of one of the bills. Thinking from Sierra, maybe.
So my question when we get with this IT, all the stuff that's later in the meeting on IT, none of those requests are are
No.
in these, in this department?
No.
Okay, so.
That's correct.
Plus all of the approvals down below, but the money was approved by you folks, it's just not in the in the actual budget.
So let me add, ask the question a little more broadly then, because I think you can answer it, is none of the requests that are being made today are reflected anywhere in this document?
No.
So that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Chuck, it seems like we should at least find out where we're at with this sixteen thousand, so we understand what it is.
Well, to me, we know what it is because Chuck came to us with a quote for items and we signed a contract for that quote. Or we, we could, we committed to buying those items from that vendor for the total dollar amount.
That doesn't mean that something is that, that couldn't have happened that made that project sixteen thousand dollars less, buy something, they different pricing, so I mean.
But Chuck has just said that that's not the case.
Well, he's going to check, he said. He's gonna check to see if how much more of this sixteen thousand he's going to need. That's all we're asking people to do. I don't know.
I can double check it, but I don't think that there's anything, uh, that's, uh, coming back to us at this point.
In other words, you don't think you're gonna need the sixteen?
No. Uh, no, I'm saying if there's sixteen thousand out there, then it's stuff that we have not got yet, and it will be, that money will be used, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, you're saying the.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna, the next unexpended item is, uh, IT spilling, training, and travel. That was approved a year ago for eleven eight.
Yeah, I think that could, that's fifty-four hundred that could probably be freed up if if Chuck agreed because they've done their training and their travel for this year.
You're correct, the training and travel is done.
Whi- which is where?
That's spilling and training.
IT spilling and training.
Five thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
You see it, Bill?
Yeah.
So we just approved some equipment with the investigator, that must have been like the tunnel cover. But what about the equipment we approved back in?
Yeah, the, so the seventy-five, forty-eight is going to be combined with what they asked for at the last.
I think I remember them mentioning.
That's what they said.
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay, well, combined, in other words, I'm gonna spend both?
Yes.
They gave us that film last week.
They had a total of twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars worth of, and last week you approved seventeen. And together with the remaining unspent of seventy-five, forty-eight, that covers their total requests of about twenty-five thousand.
So now we're down to SO equipment, cameras, printers, there's a.
Yeah, and, um.
What's happening with the cameras and printers?
So the the printers were purchased, um, earlier in the year, I believe it was back in February, March. Um, you had approved the purchase for the printers, so that's already been bought and paid for. Um, the cameras was a discussion that we had earlier in the year. I just looked up the meeting agendas again back on June. Um, and it's also on the agenda for later today that revolves around the federal, uh, grant, which I can discuss further now or or later, but uh, we will be looking for, there will be a component needed out of Argo funds to fulfill the cruiser cameras uh, in conjunction with that federal grant to the tune of approximately about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, or a hundred and seventy-two thousand.
In addition to the forty-three balance here, same?
No, not in addition to that, that, the cruiser cameras that were, I'm sorry, I was confused by your initial statement. You had approved purchase of cruiser cameras earlier this year to the tune of roughly that amount, I believe.
Fifty-eight thousand.
And so what happened was is there was a return on cameras because we then learned soon thereafter that those cameras were going to be discontinued December thirty-first of this year, so rather than, uh, spending that amount for cameras that would be obsolete nine months later, we returned them and, uh, are in need of a new camera system, which is the further discussion later on in this agenda.
That's a hundred seventy-five thousand.
That's what, that's what we would be asking out of Argo funds, that's the portion that would not be covered by the federal grant.
Okay, so, so that forty-three, seven ninety can be added back?
To be used.
The forty-three, uh, reflects the return of the of the equipment.
Yeah, we, we returned the equipment and.
And we got the credit and and I.
So that forty-three, seven ninety is available.
Sounds amazing to me.
Yeah. So that can be, that's going to go unspent if we don't use it another once.
Correct.
You're coming up with a new.
Yes, we have, like I said, later on the agenda, we'll be talking about the actual camera system to move forward for years.
Okay, so we've determined that we can add that.
Yes.
Forty-three, seven.
So the, uh, Monica, the ergonomics upgrades. Are those unexpended balances?
Uh.
Do you still have more bills you gotta pay?
Well, what do you want me? Yep, yep, um. A little bit of that, the two twenty-four was in the sheriff's department, and I ended up combining them because I used just one account in Trio. Uh, so the total of seventy-three hundred, some of that is still outstanding, we're ordering, we're ordering equipment for the HR office and.
In other words, leave it all right there.
I would leave it all right there. I would need to check with Amy to see, Amy and the SO to see uh, if they need that two twenty-four, we might be able to return that.
Exactly with the courthouse, Amy's courthouse.
Camera system, Dennis?
Uh, yes, in fact, I think we're still getting, uh, some backup supplies in for that, but that uh, looks to be on track for that same figure. I don't see going over, but we'll expend all of it.
It's eighty-five left, you're gonna spend it eighty-five. How about the DA's generator, this twenty-three seventy?
Being installed today.
The twenty-three seventy left, is that something that you balance?
Yeah, it's gonna be installed today, expended, end of the next warrant.
You'll, you'll, you'll spend it twenty-three seventy.
Yeah, the quote was ninety-eight, twenty-nine, you'll spend that.
Yes.
Building generator? Yeah, twenty, about three thousand dollars left there.
Uh, that, the job is complete.
Bill's paid.
That's paid, all paid.
All right, so that can get. And you have madlocks, building madlocks, Dennis, is eighty-five hundred, I mean, no forty-five hundred left in that?
No, the madlocks is done.
It's it's done.
That's zero.
I'm looking, I'm looking this wrong.
Probably quarter.
I'd have to check with. Yeah.
So you haven't uh, uh, RCC backup radio system, you're in twenty-four thousand. You haven't spent any of that?
Uh, we had.
I guess.
No, I'm not, yeah.
Have you never spent it all?
Uh, no, I was, part of my discussion with my request was moving that money into that to bring down the cost of my proposal. We had this twenty thousand.
No, that twenty thousand was.
So there's still, so what's it, what's the amount that's?
One twenty-four.
Cause I, cause I only show about fifty-seven thousand outstanding projects that I'm not doing, so.
The RCC backup radio system and battery backup.
Yeah, we're not doing those.
Where, where are you now?
I, I thought I had checked with you on that one.
So we have, uh, so, so I think there was sixty-seven thousand for the two radio consoles, those, we should have gotten those, those are in. But that's outstanding, so we're supposed to pay that. So there should be a balance roughly of about fifty-seven thousand left out of that that is unexpended right now for the two projects that we're not gonna do, backup radio.
So how much of that one twenty-four can we take out, fifty-seven thousand?
Fifty-seven thousand.
We can put back into.
Put back into my, well, so my, my proposal for the radio system for EOC was to roll that money into that project. Cause that's a hundred thirty-nine thousand, bring that back now. Uh, it's something that.
Do you, do you have a new project you want to put fifty-seven into?
Yes, yes. That's, that's later.
That's later in my, under my business.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to do all this because I still think despite all this.
Well, this exercise today, though, that fifty-seven, it's available till we approve this project, right? So we can add that back in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, I was trying to figure out what the sixty-seven thousand, which is how I'm gonna build for that.
Has that paving contract been paid? Well, I mean, it's, it's been done.
It has done, but we had a contingency there that we will recover, well, I'll, I'll see if I can get that bill ASAP, because Yeah, it's been done and we wanna pay it, but if we didn't go over, then. And why not return that money back into the?
But it's not gonna be significant, we need to talk about ten, twenty grand maybe?
If that, if less.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Well, that's a different, yeah, I mean, we're, we're talking about.
Ten of those is pretty good.
Well, he said less than ten thousand.
Yes, yeah, it was.
A, a final bill when we get it, then we come.
Exactly right.
We haven't got the final bill.
I'll, I'll contact Peter right now.
So this joint year generator contract, that's a maintenance contract, let's just.
I haven't received the bill for that.
One thousand, one, one hundred and eleven. Joint year generator maintenance. Contract. Oh, well, I shouldn't say that, it's joint year generator contract.
For how much money?
Eleven hundred.
Uh, no, but that, that's paid when they come and do the service on hand, portable generator. And that's another, uh, thing that was discovered as a result of the other.
So do we have a, do we have a contract for them to do it in that amount?
We do.
Okay, so it's. And you're satisfied Monica, that's committed?
Uh huh.
The survey, but that's, we're gonna pay that, correct?
Yeah, it's ongoing, they, survey went out, now they're just collecting results and reporting it.
And we haven't paid no money yet for the striping?
Uh, actually, yes, we just did, just paid that.
So that's, that twenty two thirty nine is no longer there?
That's right, right.
General services.
Sixty five, water system.
Yeah, that's underway.
Yep.
We don't have a bill, so it'll be expended.
These are all brand new projects, so. I don't see them go.
I'm expecting next week. Not yet, I'm with.
So we may add those that I have Monica to balance of one, two eighty five. I have missing four, rough numbers, we still have. We have a potential for hundred and thirty, hundred and fifty, we have potential for another two hundred thousand.
So.
We're checking.
So I, I just did a spreadsheet here. Bill, I don't know if this helps. A spreadsheet of additions that, um, we know, and then there's two questions. That have to be checked on, so additions that we know is a hundred and seventy four, two thirty four. So basically a hundred and seventy four thousand dollars. That we know, and I can list them a few. If that helps. Does it help or not?
Just a second. We got a hundred and seventy?
One, one seventy four. Two thirty four.
Well, then if you listed something here that they were gonna check on, yeah, go ahead, just real quick and tell me what the.
Okay, the ARPA consultant, that's fifty two hundred, I'll round numbers, is that all right or?
Yeah.
Uh, ARPA consultant is fifty two hundred, broadband consultant is fifty nine eight. Spillman is five thousand, four fifty nine.
Didn't I just say?
That's spill and travel.
Yeah, I just. Okay, on the second page.
I'm, I'm going by my spreadsheet, so yeah, probably.
Fifty four, we just said fifty four.
Fifty nine, that's a spill and travel.
Yeah.
Okay, and then. There's a couple of questions, I'm not, that'll be my second total. Then SO equipment, cameras and printers, that's forty three seven ninety. And then there's a, that maintenance. Building, what is it?
Building generator.
Generator, that's.
Twenty nine hundred.
Twenty nine seventy nine, yeah, and then the RCC backup radio is fifty seven thousand. Okay, and then some questions. Are the SO entrance tower of ninety six, uh, ninety six five hundred. And then jail architecture plumbing of eighteen six four. So those are the two questions.
Well, it's also.
Uniforms, jail uniforms.
What's that copy around the deal? Phase one, forty two, two oh six.
That will be spent.
That will be spent?
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah, that was that, that's, that's why it's not my question.
I thought you'd already done.
That's not complete, no, that was, uh. A increase in the original. Uh, value from forty three to eighty four or something in the contract, and that's the difference, which is that figure.
So, but the jail architect, you're, we're not sure on.
Yeah, and I've had, I've queries out on that already. Seeking final accounting on both jobs.
Probably make of several sound, they've left others out. Still not the. Two figures to do with.
Well, we do, we. If we ignore the questions, which I think we have to at this point. There's a hundred and seventy four thousand to be added back. Because we, those we have vetted, right?
Yeah, I've been.
Yeah.
Here today.
And I can.
So what's your?
One million four hundred and fifty nine thousand.
A million four hundred and fifty nine.
Four eighty one.
One eighty one?
Four eighty.
Four eighty.
I'm gonna do this so that we, we actually have a document that we can. Work through it.
I'll always go back to my own.
Of course.
Spreadsheet and weekly updates.
I do have some information, that paving invoice is gonna be one oh six four thirty.
That's the amount of the contract.
Chuck, there's contingency in there?
No, we must not have assigned one, that's the contract.
Yeah.
I was just asking.
Now, to the other. Element to this equation that we. Not sure if we know what it is today, but. At some point, Dennis, we're going to sign a contract. With Louis Malm and Shay for. The Hancock project.
Yes. So they've, they've got that budget that they're going to build, which commits the, the remaining ARPA funds that. We want to add.
Are they, are they waiting for a number from us?
No, they're. No, they're, they're gonna build the budget and based on what we've given them, we're gonna be. In a position, this is where we're actually in good shape, because if it comes in at one point four nine six. Uh, there are gonna be means by which we can reduce that figure by electing to perform. Uh, or not perform certain work, or to take a different, less expensive path. As we, as we move closer and closer, filling out that figure. Which is why, kind of why we're doing it this way. It gives us the flexibility to get the most bang out of the buck. As we're, as we're.
But they're, they're right now planning on one and a half million dollars, four above the purchase price, correct?
Yes.
Which is.
And.
Basically where we're at, so I mean, we're.
Okay, so. John, did you, you come up with one four fifty nine four you want?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I. Okay, now, my last question before we start moving on. Do we have a total Monica anywhere of the requests, of today's requests? So. Probably should do that, right?
That depends. If. If we're going to sign a contract with Louis Malm and Shay that includes one and a half million dollars worth of projects. Then we don't have any money left in ARPA for any additional projects.
That's right, that's my point.
And so there's no reason to discuss any additional projects today unless we find monies that they're looking into. Over and above one point five, that we can discuss at the next meeting, but then we won't spend those.
Yeah, so my point is, the point that I'm making is that, that, that contract that you're talking about is one. I don't have a front, is one five basically. We only have one four five nine, so we're already short. And we're talking. Uh, we're talking. I mean, this.
Twenty five hundred, twenty three thousand, twenty one thirty one, we can go through and do a rough.
What are you, what are you doing, Monica?
I mean, that's what he's asking, the total of the ARPA requests for today. I'm already seeing twenty five thousand, thirty thousand.
But if we're forty one thousand dollars short, obligations, why are we considering hitting?
And that's, that's the point. So. My study weekend, what I was. Trying to figure out was. I, first of all, I didn't think we had the money for any of this. Any of their requests. Second is. We've got some dust to settle, just, you know, of, of, uh. Uh, approximately. Uh. Hundred fifteen thousand. Okay, of, you know, things that we don't know how they're gonna shake out. I don't think we can deal with any of these requests till the next meeting. Till we find out, well, I mean, some are unlike better than others, but I'm talking generalities here. I, I don't think we can entertain any of these requests till the next meeting and the earliest.
I, I agree.
And, and I'm, I'm worried that we can't even sign.
Well, nothing in what we're signing is, means that everything must come from our, what we're doing, so signing one point four. Yeah.
Well, not, well. I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but what we're signing is. What's been suggested is to sign something and have it come out of our. Your point is if we. Excuse me, if we're short, we always, we commission as the. Ability to go get what we're short somewhere else.
Or in the contract to understand that we're forty one thousand dollars short, which is.
You can reduce scope.
And we can, even though we signed a one point five, they ended up saying, okay, we're gonna remove forty one thousand dollars for the projects here to make this one point four five.
And there's provisions in that contract too.
Yes.
Make the alter, yeah.
Yeah.
Because the truth.
In fact, what you're signing today with Louis Malm is out of that money, it's not separate, it's included. And that, the next contract that you sign for the whole job will be absorbed in that.
We're gonna have to come up with additional funds before we need to provide some of that, so.
So here's another thing, in, in, on today's agenda is a bid open.
Right?
Okay. So I think we're obligated to open that bid. Okay, but we can't take action because we're not worth it.
The bits of four.
Jail transport vehicle.
What, jail vehicle?
Yeah, jail.
A vehicle, transport van.
Yeah.
Well, uh, they do have money in the budget for that. They do have money in that jail budget for that, they have enough to cover that.
Part of that is obviously we don't know what the bids are to start with, so.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Till you open those, you don't know.
We know, we know it's fifty grand.
But I would assume.
Well, I, I'm just throwing things out here, trying to figure out a path. And, and I, I'm very sorry that I introduced this, you know, this concept that we're doing now, but I think it needs all the time.
That's pretty necessary.
Right, spot on.
That was maybe the minimum discussion we're gonna have, cause that was my concern too, so I mean, that was part. I didn't eliminate any, because I wanted to have you have the opportunity to discuss some of these, but absolutely. I knew we were gonna have to have this conversation, cause that was my immediate concern when I saw them all.
Well, my, my head was gonna blow up, especially when I got the IT, I was like.
But I, I will say, I guess, some of, one of the questions we'd have to figure out over the next two weeks, some of these items were. To go towards the project on the Hancock site.
Paul, this is Chuck, uh, ten of my twelve items are for the new Hancock site, they are not outside of that, so. These, this is stuff I would purchase for that site.
The larger question is, is how much of that one point five that the. It estimate.
The grant.
Was including that, any of these items, and that would be the other question we'd have to make sure, and I know that. Department heads have been submitting information back to the architect, to Charlie, to be able to. Answer some basic questions he's gonna have for that workshop when we meet over the next week or so.
Because some of those things, like Chuck, I knew that, but it's still a request here that didn't have detail, but. So what we. My question is, how much of that is gonna be able to be slid over to the grant side of that?
Is included in that.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other factor, if I'm wrong, but, but, and Andrew, I don't know if you can answer this for me, but.
Yes, sir.
We still got the match as well, which isn't factored into either one of those, the total.
I think it's in the budget, the construction budget.
So it's in the overall.
It is.
Well, the match can't be part of this discussion.
In, in the construction budget, they identify three sources of funds. One of, one of them is the match from CBA, so it's.
But so, so in that, sorry to belabor this, but for instance, cause Chuck's here and there's stuff in here for Chuck for that. So in, are those kind of items in that budget, Bill?
That's what I'm wondering is, Dennis, is in Charles' budget, does he have fixtures?
Yes.
And.
His, his budget figure is gonna be comprehensive. The consultant he's using to come up with the figure, it's comprehensive, includes, includes floor tacks and, and wall pins.
So what?
Everything.
Dennis, so these ten items that Chuck has that's for the Hancock site.
We've been paying for that.
Need to be approved for us to come out of ARPA, or it needs to be approved to be applied to the, to Charles' budget?
Yes, although there is an advantage to buying them directly.
Well, well, and second, the decision need, doesn't need to be made today?
No, but, uh, yeah, that's right.
I think you, when we meet next week with, with the architect and.
Yes.
That's, that's when I think you're gonna have to clarify some of those questions, so that we know. So we're not setting aside all this extra money and then we're like, oh.
What did we do that one?
We didn't, we didn't need to, we could have purchased that because it's already built into this or whatever, vice versa.
And, and I'm delving into a totally different topic here, but. You got somebody else to educate after one meeting here, and I think that needs to be done sooner than later, right? Because. Yeah. I saw that, but my point is, he needs to be given all this information, because he's got a lot of homework to do.
So I'm gonna be scheduling a meeting with him anyway to kind of, as much as possible, bring up the information and up to speed, so.
Yeah, cuz the, I mean.
Well, good, good luck.
And it's.
We've had a year to digest this. He's not gonna get to some one meeting.
I'm still choking on the crystal.
Right. Chuck, off the top of your head, what's, what's your ten items amount to?
It all depends if you wanna do one year or a five year on a lot of these contracts, uh, so, or if you wanna pay monthly, so. You have options there, which, uh, I was ready to go over with you and, uh, discuss the dollar amounts. Say you're like consolidated, they're dark private line, you could spend, uh, five years, I think it's like four hundred thousand dollars if you pay all five years. Uh, so. Yeah.
We don't have that.
We, we don't have it, and to be honest, there's absolutely no reason to discuss it, because we don't have. Money to do it, it needs to be discussed in the context of that contract, that, that, you know, when you get to it.
Okay, so you need to separate out Chuck for your purposes of, of your presentation of what wants to go to Hancock and what wants. For everything else.
Well, he said, as I got anything it is. It's all.
It's all, all Hancock.
All Hancock is what I got out of this.
Yeah, I thought you said ten and twelve as well, so.
Well, ten of the twelve items is, has to do with the Hancock site, that is correct, and, but none of it is, uh, grant money, it's all. ARPA or coming out of our budget.
Okay, I'm just saying, right, so I'll go back again. We're gonna have a discussion with you about what those ten, uh, and then, you know, the two was a separate discussion.
Yeah, one of the other two is just, uh, it was a contract that Michael wanted to, uh, introduce to you guys that he already signed, it was, uh. Has to do with our phone systems and it's a couple lines that were missed. That had to be added in, and Ja- John and Michael talked about it, and they signed the contract and pushed it through to keep the. Phone project moving, and they just wanted you to be aware of it.
Now, do you got that number right in front of you, Chuck?
I do here. It's, uh.
It, it was a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, I think, recurrent fee per month.
One sixty-eight.
One sixty-eight for non-recurring, one thirty-eight recurring.
Okay, yeah, in fact, I had like three questions on that.
Is that a next meeting discussion?
No, that's, it's this meeting. Cause that's not a.
Okay, so are we at the point that we're just going to make a blanket statement right now, that we're not gonna entertain any discussion. Only using ARPA funds today?
Well, so, my, yeah, I think we need to say that, Bill, and then as we move through the agendas, the. So I don't get lost, like, right now, we're at, we're at A B.
Yeah.
So I think A B needs to be.
Tabled.
Needs to be tabled or we, you know, chairs, needs to say we need to move on.
Table B, well, uh. I think if we can, and Andy's here, that we determine whether or not they want to, us to revisit this. Based upon the discussion we had today, whether or not they wanna withdraw other requests. The reason I say that is, is that, I mean, for the first time, the department has been told flat blank, the monies, there isn't much money left, if any. We might come up with a few more bucks next meeting on some of these researches, but.
So, Bill, I totally agree with your tact, what, what I, what I envisioned was. You know, at the next meeting. When we have a better idea is, you know, making that decision, but maybe. That we're short at the next meeting if we do now.
Well, maybe, maybe that's something we task Michael, with all of these, we have a table. Verify, I would think, if I just say one, that one, see, if no, just remove it from the agenda, I guess that's easier.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I agree, okay.
So, so item A B.
You're gonna move the table out?
Well, I, I would, do you want actual motion, or do you? I wasn't gonna move the table, because Michael, move the table means that we're gonna actually put it on the next agenda.
Oh, so by general consensus, we're not gonna discuss it today if it comes back to us for the topic.
Yeah, unless Andy wanted to make a quick statement.
I most definitely do know. Alright, so we have the proclamation.
I appreciate your time to hear. Andy, a proclamation?
Yes.
So. You want?
You sign that, Andy?
Yeah.
So this proclamation is merely a renewal of the existing document, work for, just the date, who, who, who change. Uh, the timing of it, uh, is such that this is something that the state has requested. Uh, that we complete at this time, so they can fulfill all the federal obligations.
So I'm gonna move to approve and sign Hancock County NIMs pro- proclamation. Uh, renewal as presented.
Sign the most, call us in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright.
Any others ready?
Yeah.
I totally understand, thank you.
Alright, now we're gonna open up, uh, bids. Alright, so Darlings. There's for. Twenty eighteen. Do you want your key available?
Yeah.
Are you getting something here?
Okay, bid request set to over, sir, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay. Twenty eighteen, under thirteen thousand dollars. Forty-three.
I think we're probably all set for forty-three thousand, but I'll leave you guys.
Are you trading in something?
My understanding is that they have one that they are replacing. They have one they are replacing, but we did not discuss the bid when they requested the price right. Cause that's the, that's the topic of the bid. There was no trade in fact.
It is beautiful, it's specific.
It is.
That's the, what?
Let's see that. I wonder if there's a trade in? So you gave us a trade in equity of three thousand. So, the forty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-four, but then they gave us a trade in of three thousand. Re-baited fifteen hundred, brings down that forty-three zero seven four. So they must have called Tim. And gone in that.
Of course, it's customer trade, right, too?
Yeah, so they must have got that. So, yeah, that would be the, with the trade in.
Alright, let's trade, so with trade, we're looking at, uh, four, forty-three thousand, seventy-four dollars each.
What was that number?
Uh, forty-three thousand, seventy-four dollars.
And that's which Darlings, there are.
Yeah, it's Darlings, yeah, two, twenty-two-five Pacific.
Which Darlings, though, cause there are.
Well, it's a Chrysler. Uh, I hear it elsewhere. Oh, yes, it's Chevrolet. Alright, this one is Darlings from Bangor. Uh, F with the trade in, we're looking at thirty-nine thousand, eight sixteen.
And what was that for?
This is actually on a twenty-two-five Honda Odyssey. E X L.
Does it say what they factored our trade in value for?
Uh, trade in. Yeah, they give a trade in.
Is it just those two?
Yes.
Correct, cuz you wanted to open it up to be sixty, and that's your B that would be.
He needs, he needs, yeah, take back. See, see what he wants to do. Alright.
Well, it's. So is it something that you could discuss ahead of next meeting?
He could come in, he looks at it, makes a decision.
Well, how are we gonna pay for? We're not gonna pay for that, if he wants to pay for that, it's, uh, it's reserved.
It's twenty thousand in their reserve right now?
That's all he's got. We're not gonna look at that today.
Oh, so. I can have him look at that.
Is there, when they bid on vehicles like this, my guess is that there's some expiration.
Sometimes states it on it, um, usually it's like ninety days or thirty days, but. I don't see an expiration on. Either.
Stocks. Well, you remember, he came to us on a pretense that he could get this out of that.
Yeah.
I don't, knowing that, right?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah. This is another case where my next meeting is the end of the process. Okay.
Uh, next, obviously, the action will be postponed. Uh, they are requesting for more Victoria Watkins to temporary full-time, uh, effect from January first, or January fourth, sorry. To May ninth of twenty-six at, uh, pay rate of nine A with no benefits.
So. That's in favor?
Who was the second?
Can I understand? You don't have any to that question. Um, temporary full-time, I mean, that, that break there is.
So what, what I understand is this, he, this is the interim that, that, uh. Tim had sent out an email to you about, over the last week or so. So that's, that's what the particular person he's talking about. I mean, he's, again, Tim knew he couldn't be here right now, he's meeting with Peter Marchese right now, so.
So maybe we should.
That was Joe.
I, I, I'm sorry, that was you.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you.
So do we, uh, it sounds like what we should do is pause the jail till, till. The end of the meeting.
I mean, that's what he originally questioned.
Is that, sorry, what he asked?
He's the person that would have the answer to these questions.
Okay, so.
We'll move on.
Yeah.
Let's go to the sheriff.
Perfect, uh, accept resignation for Deputy Zach Damm, effective November twenty-seventh.
I'm gonna move to accept the resignation of Deputy, uh, Patrol Deputy Zach Damm, effective. November twenty-seventh, thank him for his seven years of service in Hancock County, and wish him the best of luck.
Sign a motion, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next was, it did have to do, the discussion of project numbers did have to do with ARPA funds, so we can pass over it, it was. Uh, the reason why there's not a month there is simply because we wanted to provide an update of where we were. In regards to that federal grant that was discussed, uh, previously earlier in the year. I can provide a little bit of a, just a, a quick overview of that, just so you understand where it's over to.
Well, this letter that we were, this email that we were just provided from Senator Collins' office. Does that put this to bed?
Well, I, I, I can't really answer that definitively, but I'll say that that remains pending.
Yeah.
So the reason. I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, the reason why it doesn't put that to bed completely, and correct me if I'm wrong, but. The federal in discussing it with Andy is that the federal, um, grant would pay for the initial equipment installation. But does not pay for the warranties, it, we do not anticipate it'll pay for the operational costs and things like that, so. Uh, it was something that we had discussed at a couple meetings earlier in the year. Um, Commissioner Clark's recommendations to, um, wait for the federal grant, which I think makes sense, you know, don't. Expend ARPA funds when you have the ability to essentially pay for those costs utilizing the federal grant. Um, the, the problem that we've ran into now is the, the grant has been kind of kicked back incrementally. Um, as far as being signed, and so that has then also. Pushed back the request to, for the supplemental costs that we had anticipated from ARPA funds for. The operational expenses, uh, the current, uh, quote that I have for the operational expenses that would be tied to that equipment. Is to the tune of a hundred and seventy-two thousand, so that's, that's kind of the position that we're in, the predicament that we've been put in due to the. The delay in this federal.
Man, I.
Yeah, I know, excuse me, I gotta, I gotta just remark here that. If we find a few dollars over and above the one point five at the next meeting. There is going to be some jockeying from department heads on who gets funded and doesn't. And discussion today, I think, has given unfair advantage to some department heads, while others have the ability today to plan to see. Why they need money, I really think that we should be putting all discussion on the possibility of spending ARPA funds. Off to the next meeting and discuss whichever ones come forward.
I'd like to hear Andy's comment.
Yeah, what's been shared by Lieutenant is accurate, the grant pays for the acquisition. The installation, but not sustainment.
And I'll, I'll cease any further conversation, I have a problem with that, I just wanted to update you as far as that federal grant.
And, and another important thing, I think, I'm sure you're aware, is that. I don't know the structure of it, I don't know whether there's gonna be. Is it gonna be run through Homeland Security or Department of Justice, or the COPS grant, or a burn grant? I don't know if there's gonna be a local natural department, but most important of all is, this is for each law agency, it's not just the sheriffs. So it's gonna be universal, most all, all, all the towns.
Yeah, everybody's gonna be faced with the dilemma.
That's correct.
Alright. Uh, next, we'll skip over C, the request for ARPA funds. Um, D is permission to, the following, uh, to approve us to look at, uh, putting out. The vehicles that we have, uh, taken by forfeiture out to bid. We have to seize those by means of, uh, prior drug investigations that they have been forfeited to the county. Uh, so we're just looking for permission to move forward with that.
Do you have any, you don't have a year or anything for that, uh, challenge?
I believe it's a twenty sixteen, but I don't have the exact year.
So I'm gonna move forward with putting out to bid the following forfeiture vehicles. Two thousand and five Mercedes-Benz and Dodge Challengers requested by the Sheriff's Department.
So, call us in favor?
Aye.
Alright, aye. I'd like to, I'd like to ask you, if you sent Michael a copy of the, of the award certification.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, thank you. Alright, maintenance, you have anything?
Uh, nothing yet, no?
I'm gonna move to accept and file the name of this monthly report as presented.
I'm gonna move to accept and file the name of this monthly report as presented.
Second motion, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So this is that contract.
This is the first con, yeah, this is the develop the budget contract. This is gonna give us a foothold to build that number that has integrity to allow us to sign a construction contract with the parties to, to set aside the property by the end of this.
So, my feeling is we are ready to take action. Does that, you concur, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to accept, am I in trouble?
Not good.
Okay, I'm moved to accept and authorize the chair to sign architectural engineering services proposal with Lewis, with Lewis and Mom, with the Lewis and Mom team, dated December third, twenty twenty four, update as presented, so there was an update dated today.
Yeah.
Provided, and that's what I'm moving to sign.
I'm signing the motion.
Is there a dollar amount?
Yeah, three and a half again.
I think that their fee, what was their fee for this portion?
Well.
What's in there?
The reason that I said is presented, because, to be honest, the fee is in there and I couldn't figure out which.
Your Charlie on here, are you chance?
I guess you'll have to look for the document. I think page two.
Page four.
Well, but that's of the, of the new one, and the new one is not within the book, is it?
Oh.
I'm giving it to you.
That's why I, that's why my motion.
The only change that was updated was just the description item, so there wasn't a change.
Phase two was all did it page one.
Wow, or whatever, I mean, in terms of the updated, updated, the attorney had requested one change.
Description of the building.
Okay, rather than, uh, rental space, basically, it is office space, that was page two building out. Just for definition of change recommendations, so nothing else changed from what you were given, either your original package, from what I understand.
Yeah, so could you read that, that in the amount of?
Uh, what will moment?
Amount of this preliminary contract.
Hey, what, what I'm moving to sign. You asked for, in the, what are the amount of, I'd like to know what that is.
So, page six, number nine, is A E Services B an initial payment? Read down through that. There's an LMA initial design team services fee of nineteen thousand nine eighty two. And then there's also a E L S initial reconstruction team servicing fee of five thousand.
Let me get to where that, that's under which tab?
In six.
Uh, uh, which tab?
Mainest. Mainest eight C.
I have an electronic, I'm trying to find.
Eleven C.
Why I don't think it's that.
You can't find it under.
Oh, I got it right here, it's under, under page what, six?
Yeah, page six, tab number nine.
Okay. So, this con.
Nineteen nine eighty two, right?
Yeah.
The nineteen nine eighty two.
Yeah, so that's the, the amount of, is what I'm saying.
Plus the five for Yale Shang.
So it's twenty four.
Yes.
Nine eighty two.
So we're putting off. This is what we, what we're actually gonna. We, we're planning on adding three point five million to it.
That's why, um, that's where I was struggling.
I will state a question.
So why is it this figure? Well, it's because they wanted to, to more closely delineate the budget figures and allocate them, so that when you sign the contract, there'll be no question.
And we'll be able to get that by the next meeting?
Yes.
That's the goal, we are, our goal, they're going. That's what we're really contracting with today.
Okay, so that's what's my question.
Exactly.
Okay, so.
This is just pre, pre-construction.
Okay, so.
For this twenty four thousand.
Yeah, so let me get this straight in my head, because what I thought we were doing is signing this contract, and there's a dollar amount associated with this contract. And at the next meeting, there's gonna be the, the big dollars, what projects.
Two, you're gonna be signing your deal with Lewis and Mom and a contract with Yale Shang as the constructor.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure that we weren't, we, we still have further action, okay, so I'll reread my motions, so it's very clear.
Chuck Paul, I did, I didn't agree, did you say, and for the chair to sign? Did you say that in your motion?
Yes. Okay, so I'm gonna read it again, I'm gonna move to accept and authorize the chair to sign architectural slash engineering services proposal with Lewis and Mom, with the Lewis and Mom team dated December third, twenty twenty four slash update in the amount of twenty four thousand nine hundred and eighty two dollars as presented.
And for the chair to sign.
That was in the first part.
Oh.
And is that for, to be paid from ARPA? I, I'm, that's, I'm.
Yes. Yes. Uh, wait a second, let's.
With the next contract you sign, this will be included.
It's part of the one point five left over.
Okay.
So, well, he answers yes and no.
I understand.
Okay, but the answer is yes and no, don't we have to be careful of? Some of this is gonna be, uh, uh, items that are in the grant, right? Of which none of those items can be paid from, with ARPA funds. So, is this separate enough that we're not having trouble there?
Yes, we think it is.
Okay. So, the amount of twenty four thousand nine hundred and eighty two dollars to be paid from ARPA funds as presented.
Second motion, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the distinction is that, uh, uh, these are, but this won't qualify as matching funds for Andrew's grant, so we, and we knew that going.
Okay, good. All right.
Next, education?
Uh, yes, I'd like the commission to accept the resignation of Alan Rolfe, effective November twenty three, twenty twenty four.
So move, uh, uh, wish him the best of luck.
Second motion, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, and I'm getting those final figures on, um, the tower and this plum job today. So, there is another bill coming for the tower project, but I don't think it's gonna be for that entire month.
So, what would be, Michael Monica, I, I, I always feel like I'm piling things on, but what would be really nice is, you know, the next meeting, we usually get the, the stuff on Friday, uh, before the meeting, if we could have like a little more time on ARPA stuff, if, I know that's putting a lot of pressure on you, but is it possible to have, just so?
Yep, what I usually try to do is wait until the, uh, that week's accounts payable is done. I try, I actually try to bring the numbers in as close as I can with what has been paid for bills.
Which is.
So right after. Yes, so right after the next time we pay bills, I'll do a, an immediate update and give it to you.
Well, that only gives us.
I mean, there, there wouldn't be any change, there would not any, be any changes reflected other than that.
There's only like three, three items that we're checking on, four items.
Yeah, well, yep, as, as I get updates, uh, I'll try.
So I had shit. Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, thank you, Monica. That's a lot.
And I think, once she can define those four items, it's just how much, if any of those, the value of those can be added back into the.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she's gonna feel comfortable.
If we talk about ARPA funding for other projects, and how close can we get to the one point five?
Oh, very important.
I think we should keep in the back of mind that the first forty one thousand G five is, goes into the one point five, and then anything beyond that is for additional projects.
All right.
You out to the site again?
Uh, not yet, not yet today, but I'm going after this.
Okay. All right.
All seems good.
Anything to add to the monthly report?
I just wanted to bring your attention to the, um, uh, November twentieth, our, at the time dispatcher trainee, Kristen Hanson, uh, did what most of us male dispatchers despise and don't want nothing to do with is, uh, delivering a baby over the phone.
That's pretty.
Someone, someone, I, I actually submitted her for, uh, the A M S store award, and the person we deal with, the A M S, has been doing this as a paramedic for eight, as a P and D for eighteen years, and hasn't done it, and most of us have not done that, so uh, she can have it, and we're happy for her, and, uh, I'm not sure, uh, with the, with the, uh, with the gender of the child was, but, uh, uh, and the teenage son that was, that she was talking to really wanted nothing to do with anything. So, we got to, uh, uh, the other, the other two things, uh, on the twenty ninth, our staff, uh, took, uh, non-on-call reporting, uh, a major structural fire at one of our county businesses, A B M Mechanical, uh, which total loss, sounds like eleven departments were, went to the scene, uh, so they had a lot of work there. Unfortunately, that's also one of our contractors that were on fire departments and used car stations, so we'll see how that goes.
They're in Hancock?
They're down in Hancock.
Yes.
Yeah, and, uh, lastly, uh.
Just clean the nails.
Yeah. Uh, and then on, uh, Saturday morning, uh, staff, uh, that will be individual that jumped off, just got an airbrushed, coordinated with, uh, my fire department, uh, the, uh, marine patrol and Sheriff's Department, so. I'm not a wake-up call. This is what I had of the, you know, discussion.
So I'm moved to accept and file the ICC monthly report as presented.
Second motion?
Aye.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, this next item is an ARPA fund.
Excuse me, all of these are, uh, all of these are funding items.
No, no, I meant, I meant for the, for ICC.
Brittany, did you send me?
Come on.
Kind of describing what I think was.
Yes. Bob's already.
I did, I did put that in there, there stopped chuck, but you get it from me. This was the original, you know, the ready, which had kind of described everything on my agenda.
Wait a minute, Chuck. Chuck, hold on a minute, we, we wanna finish.
Oh, sorry, I never been talking about it.
Yeah, so, I, I just want, nine B is just, there'll be.
Right, that's what I said, because it was.
That's why I said.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Are these all considerations for ARPA funding, Chuck?
Yes, they were, except for the first one.
These are, it's signed.
It is.
John, I don't care that. The first one was a, uh, adjustment to the existing phone contracts, and, uh, there were lines that were missed in the original analysis, so we, uh, we had to make an adjustment on the contract, and John took care of that, just making you aware of that.
How much additional?
I think it was a hundred and thirty eight a month, so I think recurring charge was.
And then there was a hundred and sixty eight.
Longtime charge.
Longtime charge, so do you need action on that, Michael?
I mean, it would be nice to have confirmation by the commission, I mean, obviously, I sent it to the chair, and the chair just, I discussed it back and forth, and he authorized.
Yeah.
Me to proceed, but it would be nice to have the blessing.
How are we paying for the original contract? Is that ARPA funding?
No, the, uh.
That's right, look like you.
Yeah, the, the monthly recurring charges are over budget, correct?
Yeah.
That, that's all.
So this is just a change in the cost of the monthly budget?
And, and we go, just so you're aware, we go live on Thursday this week, it's a test run, uh, where we disconnect the old system, see what works, what doesn't work, and so I may have adjustments up there, if we miss something, I don't know. All the hundreds of, uh, lines that we have coming in, extensions, it's hard to get everything right, so.
But that would be just in the cost, that would be a place to.
That part of the budget, that's.
Does require.
Okay, so, this is, so please.
Yeah, right, nothing ever close to like that.
All right. So please, uh, check my dollar amounts here, as I make this. Uh, I'm gonna move to approve the VSA contract, zero, 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 four, oh, seven, eighty seven. So eighty seven, for the, for three phone lines and the sum of, of upfront cost of a hundred and sixty eight dollars and a recurring monthly charge of a hundred and thirty eight dollars as presented and recommended.
Second motion, favor?
Aye.
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 And the rest of them would be ARPA. Well, and I do have a question about that, uh, with the contracts that I have for consolidated and communications. Uh, I went out and got the monthly cost by the five year, should we be looking for a one year and incorporate that instead? Because the sheer cost of it in five years is a lot of money.
Uh, I think we should, you should bring us back with options.
Yeah, because I do have the five year, not the monthly, but I'm thinking it isn't, this, these aren't something that are in anybody's budget yet, so maybe we should be prepaying a year instead of five?
Bring that option back to us.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, so B goes away. They all go away.
Yeah.
And if, you know, would really be, if, if we get to discussing them, a memo outlining what, I, I gotta tell you, my head was, well, I knew was for, uh, you know, that site, but it was just some memo, just.
Right, that, that email I sent, try, I tried to break that down by every one of them, and then my attachments were numbered and actually met up to the numbers that I put in the email, so, so it gave the description of everything. I believe that I, in the original package, I did send that description, but the, the attendant memo that I sent out afterwards was a little bit clearer because I tied it back into.
That's where I was having trouble.
What he gave us is what I thought that I gave you with the overall package materials that you have, so.
This was just very hard to follow.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you know, and obviously, I'm saying.
No, I'm not beating, I'm not beating up on it.
No, but I'm just saying, yeah. I think the last third, the amount was a little clearer.
All right, so skipping.
Uh, move to approve and sign the monthly bills and warrants as presented.
Second motion, others in favor?
Aye.
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 The next item, basically, what we already did.
Yes.
C is, I don't know what we're putting off.
Well, C, I didn't take C as under ARPA.
Well, not necessarily, because it's, uh, it's very new. These guys from Edmunds, uh, GovTech have been trying to contact me for months, and I finally said yes to, uh, let them, I let them do a, a little interview with me, and they, they showed me what they've got. This is a, a new software system, uh, that, uh, counties in Maine are moving to, many counties in New England are moving to and moving away from what we all are suffering with is this, is Trio.
And Trio is like hundreds of modules, right? It's not just.
Well, yeah, it's multiple modules, but it doesn't have a good functioning, uh, budgeting module, which is.
That's why we have to use the big spreadsheet.
We use that cumbersome spreadsheet, and we put in many, many hours, um, this would be a more of a long-term solution, so yes, it might be ARPA initially, but I would say in, in the twenty twenty six budget, we might be looking at a, an increase going from possibly around twenty thou, I just want it so you don't faint all at once, but, uh, from currently, it's about, uh, twenty thousand that we spend, uh, overall on the budgeting, on, on all, on all of the Trio software that we're using. This one is an initial cost of sixty thousand, and then twenty thousand a year for maintenance.
So, after the first year?
Right.
So since the first year, there's no maintenance cost?
Well, the first year is the, is the data conversion, if, if they do a, and that includes a three-year data conversion, they, they would.
Get that to sixty thousand.
Right.
So we don't have to pay sixty plus twenty.
No, that's right, and then after that, it would be up to twenty thousand dollar annual cost, twenty twenty two.
If we approve this, it would be twenty. If we approve this, it would be twenty thousand, we budget forty thousand, something like that.
Yes, yeah.
Well, and and my guess is that she's not even convinced yet that, you know, because there. I I know, I know a lot of communities struggled with Trio.
Yes.
And before, I mean, I'm going back.
Yeah.
Fifteen plus years.
Yeah.
To some municipalities moved away from Trio and went to Munis, Munis, which is even more expensive.
Yeah, and much more cumbersome.
Robust, yeah.
It's all the same, it all is Harris.
Yeah.
The business is all.
You sound excited about this one.
Uh I am, I haven't had a chance to speak with Scott Ferguson um in Kennebec County, but he's the one pushing it to other counties. And also they're just now going through the transition in Penobscot County.
Is it something new to all the counties being on the same system?
No, not necessarily.
Well, I I I have sort of heard that they may be pushed from other counties to help, if all counties were on board to help. You know, get some funding from the state, now I don't know if that's real or if that's just hearsay or.
Right, well, wouldn't it too if you could do that? Who's your maintenance cost?
Yeah. So that that's all I wanted, I just wanted to mention it, so a year from now, we'll be talking about it again, probably.
And and I think that probably you and a lot of other counties, whatever happens, will be very happy as Trio.
Yeah.
With the final budget, twenty twenty five.
Okay, so. As I understand, there's two things that we gotta do here. Uh first is, uh I move to exceed the county assessment limit for the twenty twenty five Hancock County budget.
Well, before you go that far, I guess the first question is, did you have any questions about? What was sent back to you, the adjustment, final adjustments for the two budget based upon the conversations that occurred at the prior meeting?
Are there a couple of things we need to vote on before we approve that budget? The uh.
There was the change in the Department ten to uh. But that was voted on last time, so.
But the family medical leave, uh. I don't know.
Yeah.
You if we find that number, we need to vote on it, right?
Well, there was that and there was one other.
The only other thing was Department ten, which was voted on.
Yeah, so in my motion. I was, well, okay, so that that was gonna be my first motion, the second was to just approve and sign the budget. Which would have.
Well.
Which would have.
Included a change?
Yes, now, like Tim has a hand up.
I do have a firm number now for the. Geomedical, just just so you know, that that has been.
It's more or less.
It's a it's a six forty seven.
It's the same number?
That's anyway, talk to.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned, I'm not concerned, but.
I could see it's wrong.
We used the process to get to this point and that was to approve each change from the uh.
PAC to.
The BAC.
Yeah.
And I'd like to continue that and simply make a motion to accept the number, whatever number. Monica's come up with for that that line.
Okay, so why you make that motion?
I don't know the number.
And Department twenty, yeah, because these these were all sent to you yesterday, so to. Department twenty for the PFMLA.
Yeah.
Uh forty two, forty two thousand seven twenty six. And I I haven't given it an account line yet. What is the PFMLA one percent contribution?
Forty two seven two six?
Yes.
Paul, you want to make that?
Yeah, because.
Okay, I'm gonna move that we approve. An amount in Department twenty. So PFMLA one percent contribution. Of forty two thousand seven hundred and twenty six dollars as recommended by the Treasury.
And that's in order, right, second?
Others in favor?
Aye.
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 So now, Monica, we've approved all the changes represented into the right, Michael?
Sorry, I. I believe so, based on, because you took care of twenty four and eleven at the last meeting, so we made those adjustments. In what you have, I did have one quick question, just for clarification, not to mess anything up, but. And for those members that were there during the BAC, I mean, the the BAC. Varied a little bit in terms of the uh. Pro B manager salary, which percentage increase was ten percent, correct? It wasn't ten percent plus the six percent, what the BAC agreed on was ten percent, is that everybody's understanding?
Yes. I I'd have to go back and look, but.
But you didn't, you obviously.
Sitting here, my understanding.
The BAC amount, correct?
We voted for the BAC amount, right?
Yes.
Which is a straight.
We understood was a straight ten percent.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So I think now you, if everybody's satisfied, now you got the two motions.
Well, I was satisfied because I think we just did what was fair. So, okay, so the first one is to move to exceed the county assessment limit for the twenty twenty five Hancock County budget.
Second motion, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna move to approve and sign the twenty twenty five Hancock County budget of twelve million five hundred twenty two dollars, excuse me. Twelve million five hundred twenty two thousand forty one dollars as presented. With an amount of nine million eight hundred fifty nine thousand eight hundred and twenty six dollars be raised through taxation. Representing a fourteen point five five percent or one million. Two hundred fifty two thousand seven hundred thirty three dollar increase over the twenty twenty four amount raised through taxation. And they and six hundred thirty three thousand seventy three dollars and five cents over the LD one target.
I'm gonna second for discussion. All right, discussion? I'm going to approve this, it's on the budget, because I think it should be all three of us on there, but I don't, I I don't approve the budget. Pro, but we had an opportunity to reduce this, I think these fourteen and fifteen percent increases are getting all too normal. If we're getting comfortable with that, trying to convince the public that they should be as well, and I think we had the opportunity to reduce this even more and didn't take advantage of those. So although I'll sign it, you know, approve the motion, I do not approve the budget as presented for. All right, any other discussion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All that's heads up?
Unless you have any question?
Same thing for last year.
Any question?
Yeah.
Just change the dates.
Yeah. Move to approve the twenty twenty five, all this goes.
Second motion?
And I would like your favor.
Aye. No change to you? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have our. P M L F A.
Well, I put together just that that graph for you, that that's based off, that is something that's been passed around through notifications are being sent out by a number. Entities, obviously, both at the municipal county and state level as well, so uh just tailored based upon what your decision was at the last meeting.
So I'm gonna move to approve the.
Phil, I I interrupt you.
I move to approve the PM. PFML notification letter as presented and authorize the county administrator to send the letter to employees.
Second motion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That that template is.
Same, basically the same one, just threw in the seventy five dollars and updated the wage rate.
Yes, I move to approve the twenty twenty five regional ACL agreement and MOU template templates. Templates as presented.
Second motion, what's in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. All right, get the employee health insurance, uh buy down.
Yeah, so I provided you with basically three different versions based upon the new. Rates that were given. And the breakdown was, I believe, within your packet of information as well. Essentially, which had indicated a four percent, I believe it was. Uh increase projected increase that that had already. Started uh at July because we had the mid year uh change, if you recall. Basically, what I provided you with is is a summary of what those changes would look like for two thousand and twenty five, uh based upon the current. Rates of twenty four, when the increases of twenty five, uh at thirty percent, thirty five percent, forty percent, and twenty four, apparently you were at uh. Thirty five percent, so question is, which one of those, at the end of the day, do you? Feel might be the right percentage, you know, or more, I mean, it can obviously go higher if you want or lower as well, so.
I can't because I thought thirty five was. My information was over that. Somebody wants to weigh in or just want to make that motion?
Wait a minute, where are you?
Yeah, you.
Thirty five or forty percent.
And and there's examples of thirty, thirty five and forty.
Right. Well.
And we're at thirty five.
Sure, and if you recall. Uh employees are granted the opportunity for buyout if they can document they get sufficient coverage. And so when I encourage employees to go without coverage, they've got to provide enough of coverage, so. For every employee that we can encourage to take a buyout if they have the opportunity to be adequately protected is savings for the county. And. The more we offer, the better incentive to do that, the better the chance that we're going to get more people. It's curious that. If thirty five is a division, you shouldn't look at forty percent. I wonder how many people out there are on the fence about to. Whether or not they want. And. More bus from encouraging to do.
My feeling is that it's probably more of a choice of coverage than than the five percent. Change. Start, that's a fair assumption, that usually probably individual circumstances dictate whether or not it makes sense. So if they have coverage to someone else and they can take advantage of this, then.
That was my reason.
They would, but I mean, I don't, that's only in no evidence that I can present to you in just a different conversation with people, there's no. Analysis that we did last time when we went from thirty to thirty five, they say that all of a sudden this increase like can't honestly answer that, but my gut says that that's probably. If they don't have the ability, then obviously they won't be doing it, and if they do, I don't know, five percent would be the threshold, to be honest with you.
That was my gut and the reason I. Was ever including thirty five in my potential motion is because that's what it was last year, we had similar discussion last year. John, I guess I can be influenced on what my. Motion would be, but that's my.
Oh, the sheet right below that, that the objective rates for twenty five. Employee, employee only is twelve thousand one percent, twenty four rates or twenty five?
That's twenty four, twenty five, so basically it's what started in July, it's right now, that's the current monthly, so.
Is the rates changing in July?
Yeah.
Well, that's that's thirty, that's yeah.
Well, the one, the existing is at thirty five.
Currently, we're we're paying thirty percent.
No, thirty five.
Thirty five.
The sheets like this rate twenty percent.
You just want, so there you've got an example of what it would look like thirty, what it would look for thirty five, and what it would look like for forty, because obviously I didn't know which.
I know what the guys.
Option.
This number right here, that would be thirty. Twelve thousand one fifty six. Eight three.
But there are also, each calculation, there are certain things that. That you have.
Excuse me, but I don't understand. So.
That's.
So figure right there is thirty percent, not thirty five.
And I'm not sure which one you're looking at, Kelly.
Okay, that's what we're here, that's what I'm looking up here, another one.
Yeah, but you're on a thirty percent, if you go to this page.
I know, I asked you what was what percentage was being in twenty four, twenty five.
No, right now, so it's either, that's the issue that you have here, you make this decision at the end of the year, but we're already halfway into the year. Because of the budget year, when you budget for all of this, obviously, y- you have to, or we make an estimate, the. Estimate that hopefully is backed up as to what the increase is going to be from July until December. So the rates that went up four percent, it went up four percent in July, started in July, so we've been doing that right now, that's what the what the payment amounts are. But we don't adjust for it because you voted last year to go twelve months with the buy down at thirty five percent based on twenty three, twenty four rates. So every year, you keep picking it a year out.
The orange is what's current.
That's why I'm trying to keep it consistent, I see.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with thirty five, so.
Okay, I'm gonna move to approve the twenty twenty five employee health insurance buyout buy down policy based at thirty five percent as presented.
Second motion? Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next one is where I need some help.
Particular one is a question for all of you, how much do you want, but it's just stated, obviously, you're raised one up four percent. So where you go from there is up to you, I mean, historically, traditionally, there's been a five dollar increase, but we talked about this last year at great length, if you recall.
So to me. We're already behind, we at least have to keep up with the. Last year, I felt that I should, we should start playing a little catch up, but you know, that's the prevailing thought, so. Do I need help?
The one thing I noticed was, can't really. Do the JL CBA, whatever you have the question mark, because obviously we still have to do the contract.
Yeah, really, all you're voting on right now is that first.
Yeah.
First, for the regular full time employees exempted appointment slash elected official employee contribution.
So.
So you suggest you think it should be more than five dollars?
No. I I I'm not, I I I just want to make sure, because we discussed this at great length, this year. It it's, I agree with what Michael. Is doing here, but that was not the prevailing thought last year.
And that was, again, what I put there is kind of just the historical.
Yeah.
Adjustments.
And Michael's. Well, I don't know if it's Michael's, what's on this document does start to play a little catch up. That's why I happen to agree with these dollar amounts, but again, I'm only bringing it up because of the discussion last year. So should I just make my motion and then we'll go further? Okay, I'm gonna move to set the twenty twenty five regular full time employee exempt appointment, appointed elected officials' employee contribution for health insurance at. Seventy dollars per week for single. Seventy five dollars per week for employee with child, children, and eighty dollars per week for employee with spouse, family.
Second motion? Discussion? Well. Because the next category should have been separated, now we shouldn't have had to.
Because the next category should have been separated. Now we shouldn't have had JL CBA.
But we're not addressing that.
So this is. Unless one affects the other.
I mean, does any non-union employees essentially in these other categories right fall under? The five dollar increase rate even if they're.
But it's the disparity between the amounts, say. Aside from the jail, it's the non-union employees who are paying five dollars. Paying something more than the. The exempt employees.
Look, and I would advocate advocate that you stay consistent with that. Or that you stay consistent with that.
You'd have to reduce last year's rates to do that.
Or you could just, well, the idea I would say is that you're probably going to continue to pass like increases in. Play costs following years. You're going to be trying to get it to match off with essentially where we've got. RCC. Jail. So you just kind of slowly end in the job. So you'd need you'd need those ones alone. Slowly at the. And you need to move up since that two things.
So what would you hypothetically, what would you suggest a single for non-union employees be for twenty-four? Knowing that you've just put up the exempt for twenty-five to seventy. What would you? What you just said, what would you think that number would be?
Assume that would be something that. Three of you would have to discuss and be part of negotiations.
No, no, I'm talking about non-union.
I know. Traditionally, those two are lumped lumped in, I as I understand it. So.
Well.
I mean, they usually get the same.
Why we lump in non-union with jail and not actually seeing other.
I mean, the way that I understood those was that the non-union is those that choose that are still part of that. Bargaining unit, but chose not to be members of the union. But I could be wrong. I mean, you guys, you guys tell me that's the figures that have been projected for. And it's listed for all three for you. Because even if they choose not to be part of the unit, they still have to pay.
Seals.
Yeah, fees. My understanding is different than what we talked about.
Wait a minute, I I think I'm looking at this wrong. The first category, regular full-time employees exempt, which both of all. Non-union, non-union employees, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Deetclor, for example, it's in the first category. As I'm. When you say non-union, you're you're talking about non- members.
That's what I understood that to mean. That's why they were included in that breakdown.
In JL CBA, you know. Everybody's union, but everybody's a union.
That's that's.
I'm sorry, I'm I'm confused by this. It's irrelevant. So your motion stands. I agree, but it doesn't.
All right. Any other discussion? Alouds in favor?
Aye.
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 There's no action to take on the other.
Not there. I don't own that.
Yeah.
Good night. Alright, so we did, we did, we're on deed.
Yes.
And inmate medical services.
Well, I didn't see.
Ah, yes, we did.
We did.
No, we had to.
We tabled it. Oh, I made the motion and then it probably was number second. Okay, so we don't have anything.
We needed clarification.
Yeah, we need it. Yeah.
So it's just the the intern?
Yes. Victoria's working part-time right now. We have some people going to academy. The six weeks over the in January and we've discussed. Part-time overtime wages and stuff. She is in college right now. This semester is an intern this semester. She's going to school to be law enforcement. She's interested in being deputy here. So I feel if we can hire temporary full-time, we can use her to fill our. Vacancies within the within the schedule. And we can also give her some time downstairs for the deputies to get a feel of it so they can get to know her also and see what we see in her.
You're going to pay for her right here, right?
Out of our budget, out of our part-time wages, yes.
And this is like a plus for everybody, isn't it?
I think so. And it gives us the extra person. Lieutenant Shepherd has plenty to do with if we. For a week to help him get caught up on stock with compliances and stuff. So she's not going to be sitting around doing nothing on the days. So it's something that. I've talked to chief. I'm sure Dakota's okay with we take and she down there. I mean, because it's. Her long-term goal is to be here and they want a great opportunity for.
You're going to continue to pay her out of the part-time line, you say?
Yeah, bear of the part-time budget line, yes.
Yeah, and as I as I read this, this is like a plus for every, both departments and her.
If we've talked about putting an extra person on, this is a chance to see if it's actually the if I'm thinking wrong or if it's not actually worth it. It's for fifteen weeks.
And give her experience.
Right. It's a fifteen, it's a fifteen-week period.
So should I make my motion?
Yeah.
I'm going to move to promote Victoria Watkins to temp full-time from. One-fourth, two thousand twenty-five through five-nine, two thousand twenty-six. At pay rate nine A with no benefits is requested.
I just think it's a year.
Yes, sure.
What did I say?
It's written wrong. Thanks. It's twenty-twenty-five.
Oh, both for twenty-twenty-five here. You said the same month, right? Okay, yeah. So thank you.
Even done?
Yeah, that was my motion.
Same. Alouds in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, we've got our medical services here.
We just got off the phone on Zoom with them. We have a verbal commitment and we don't have the contract in hand. So verbal commitment for that price of. Six hundred forty-seven thousand dollars annually by service within the period.
Bring that back to us later.
It will not be today. It'll be it'll be your next meeting. Yeah, you'll have that your next meeting. That was your talk to them. We'll have a seventeenth meeting, but everything is a go. She's coming. She's scheduled already for Thursday and bring your employees in to. Do a walkthrough and get them.
So we don't need the action today?
Nope, just enjoy. It is coming. We'll have that next meeting. I'll have the contract to you.
Oh, that's good news, isn't it?
Yes. And. If I could extend the conversation a little bit, the fifteenth, we have no. Medical provider of this month, of the sixteenth, we have stepping down. Talking to attorney today. She's coming in Thursday to discuss with us what to talk about. Because we already have everything but the medical. Until the end of the year, all contracts provided in the for nurses, mental health, the crisis, everything. So we just need something to pick up for that. Two weeks of on-call and two weeks medical. So we're hoping that she will agree to using the funds that we're not. Paying previous for. Hopefully, we've got the funds. Hopefully, she's not looking for a big increase to come in those two weeks, but that's somehow to bring back also. Next meeting.
Well, so. So the problem is the next meeting is after that.
Yeah.
Well. Why doesn't he just require services?
Because he's trying to keep this clean.
No, no, but I'm saying, why does that require a two hundred and fifty, well?
Oh, because it's already budgeted.
Yeah, it's already budgeted. It's part of.
So we may just hopefully.
Approval to take it to the dentist and it's just you're just buying services, right?
Right, just paying.
I think I think we should just allow him to kind of whatever the we can to get that those services for the two two weeks.
Yeah, and he doesn't have to actually count us because because it's. It's in the budget. Yes.
Alright. So just one thing. Liability and all that. Where does that fall?
Yeah, we're basically going to run off the. Figures, the contract we have now that he's of appeal. Efficient, which which is driven this R and P. So we'll just have her. Act within the contract we have now. And in play.
Sounds like we would need an extension to the contract.
Yeah, I mean. Ideally, I think we'd have something.
Because the big thing is her insurance is running out of kick in until January first.
So that would be my question is the liability exposure between any interim.
Were the same liability matter break now, till the first year.
He's present contract is not.
But when the contract is present, well.
Under she has to write her own insurance.
When it expires, we have something more than nothing. Not five, but still something. And Peter was okay with it?
He would. He would like to draft the whole contract for the two weeks. But he that's his, that's his attorney side thing. But you understand what we're how we're running with now, basically what we have now. Like you're saying, no life.
So. So what about the office starting the contract? To assume.
We'd ask that. He's trying to prevent that.
Yes.
I guess what we can do, we'll have the conversation with her Thursday. See what her thought is, how she'll respond. I'll contact Peter. See if we can get something secured by them.
We need a. Sign an extension.
Oh, we have five minutes. We have pretty poor. We have to have a special.
Need authorized.
So it wouldn't be technically an extension because we don't have an agreement with her yet. The person that we would have been extending. Essentially gave their notice and opted out before the end of her. Provision of services, which was supposed to be the end of this month, but. She opted out on fifteenth, perhaps.
Correct.
So it wouldn't be an extension either. Just reporting the facts. I'm not trying to create the obstacles.
But the goal would be to try to. Have her sign a two-week contract of what we have with this, with the current standards that we have. At the sign.
Which makes sense functionally. Michael's only point is.
Well, our current contract says they have to have. Insurance, but not to the extent of the contract we just did to the R and P. He does care. Our current provider carries insurance.
Also, just not up to the standards of.
But so the question was just, it may not sound like you weren't going to have them sign anything because they were going to. They needed to take them or they needed to come in. They were going to commit. Which, again, I understand, but I just raising the issue that that puts the liability as far as I'm concerned completely back on.
We should probably have.
At least the contract that we're. Under right now, that current just change. Two-week contract of the same verbiage.
They're willing to do that, but then the next question comes, how do you approve that?
My feeling is that since it is maybe a stretch, but this is my feeling is that you are authorized. Do that because you're living within the budget. You've got to do what you got to do.
No, but it doesn't matter who it who it is, but they they need that liability coverage. I think is what Michael wants.
Right, well, Michael was. But now he's saying at least if you you maybe not bringing them up to the entire new standards of the agreement starts to differ. But at least where we are right now. I mean, my question was just trying to clarify. It sounded like it was going to be nothing. And that was just to make sure you knew that there is an issue there because that hundred percent plus liability back on because who are you going to hold? Accountably, try to go after the other people, but you have no agreement.
Yeah.
So if you have an agreement that says you have insurance, at least you have that.
And that's what I'm trying to.
Just change. The yearly contract, change the verbiage in the first register for the sixteen to thirty-first.
Give us the same level of coverage as the old.
Correct.
Okay. That's that's the goal.
That's cool. Michael, if you do need it, we're going to have to have a special meeting.
Well, I mean, the question for you is, is anything you feel comfortable doing right now to get clarification to. The jail minister that him or the sheriff could just go ahead and sign a two-week. Track basically under those parameters.
See, the technical issue is who can sign contracts. Practical issue is you're simply buying a service. It's no different than hiring a plumber to come in to work for a jail, correct? Yep. So I mean, the deal is. Yeah, right. I mean, you could make a motion right now to approve. Any contract that that the jail administrator is able to hunt with and and the chair will come in and sign it.
So what I could do is move to authorize the county administrator. To approve and then and then make medical services agreement extension.
I think we should stay with extension because we're not expanding.
Like the new agreement. And honestly, I think it carries more weight if they if one of the commissioners signed the two.
Two hundred will.
Okay, so. What about? What if I just said, move to authorize. Move to. Approve a potential inmate medical services agreement. For a two-week period. Is that what it is, two weeks? No.
Twelve sixteen to twelve thirty-one.
Move to. Potential. Inmate medical agreement from twelve sixteen to twelve thirty-one, authorize the chair to sign on behalf of Hancock County. Period.
Second motion. Alouds in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That gets us where you need it to be, Michael.
I hope not. Not ideal, but I think it puts us in a better place. Than having absolutely nothing.
You're authorizing the chair to sign or you're authorizing the county administrator?
I said chair. Because you. You said.
And did we, what did we decide? Get the mid-openers?
Right there. But you got two different vehicles. You got to trade in on one, you'll trade in on the other. It's and you don't have any money.
Okay, so that's going to have to be purchased from power, but it's not for shutdown.
Well, it's it's not. If you can get them the whole in two weeks, you can make a pitch. Next week you have to pay the difference. Two things. I mean, you're talking about two different vehicles.
Yeah, we do that because I mean, one's an all over.
Can we give them these?
We just need to have, well, we should have the original, but if you want to take time or gap, you. You take a break here, come out before you want to exactly whatever you want to do, but. We shouldn't have the original captain clerk's office, but we can make him a copy now.
Okay.
And we'll see. As I look him over and talk with him next meeting if you will pursue it.
Okay. E. Jail E.
So so that's our.
We're not entertaining today.
Good.
Just because we don't know where we.
Yeah.
You weren't here for that whole discussion.
And basically. We're going to get some thoughts like that turned off. We do not need any more funds, but you need to keep in touch with Michael and decide whether or not you want to pursue that at next meeting. Take a break.
Okay, so wait a second. So we are at. The first executive. Session is about.
Property.
Property. It doesn't look, it doesn't appear that we need that. It doesn't look, it doesn't appear that we need that.
I don't believe so unless anybody desires. I mean, you, you saw her response and, uh, yeah, so unless, unless you require, then you should be able to get that.
So we're going to skip that on, on the recognition that we're going to have the documents to sign, are you purchasing your.
Yeah, I added that to the agenda.
So that would be the next one that you would take instruction on to instruct. Basically, both attorneys work together.
Yeah.
Are you sure, are you replacing this with that motion?
No, what I did is, what I did was add that item to the agenda. So here, I'm not going to be under item G. We're just going by it, I'm making no motion.
Item H, new item?
So, yes.
I, new item?
So, now H is not, is the item that I added. I can read you.
We already had H.
Well, it's now the H.
Well, it's now the H, okay, so H is now the I.
Yeah, okay, so it'll, it would make sense to you if you follow that. I added an item after. Would have to go back to my original motion. It's moved.
That's now remunerated.
Yeah, so I'm going to most exercise the option agreement with Elliot Jordan, with Elliot Jordan closed before the end of the year on the property with a purchase price of one million eight hundred fifty thousand to be paid for myra funds.
Second motion.
So, everybody understands what I'm doing, we're exercising the. All right, I guess I could have a lot of fun.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, ready for this next one? I'm going to move to go on executive sessions permitted by MRSA Title One, Section four oh five, six D for union contract negotiation discussion.
Second motion. All those in favor? I'm going to tackle anybody who tries to go on.
So I.
All right, we've come out of executive session.
Coming back, yes, all right, it is the.
Okay, so we're ready for county administrators' office comments? About commissioner suggestions for future agendas.
Uh, the, the review that was, uh, administrator review that was discussed, uh, last time, and I, I guess it was best administrators' comments. I've got mine in, I won't forward it, I won't forward to you next day.
You got anything?
Nope.
All right.
I'm going to move to adjourn.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Aye.